Roll call, please.
Shivi.
Here.
Brekis.
Here.
Zadra.
Here.
Delgado.
Here.
George. Absent. Jordan.
Here.
Keshel. Absent.
We have two of our members out of town or en route to being out of town, and both are available and will be joining us by phone as they're in the right sections of travel Public comment. Ronald Magette? Okay.
Is there anyone here?
Yes, if you'll come up, please, to the...
Mr. Pitts. Cut me off for a little bit.
He's right behind you, sir.
Huh?
He's right behind you.
Ronald E. McGee, background Vietnam vet, military police, double disable. What I'm here to talk about, three things real quick, because that's the way I operate. One is police action, good or bad. Here about a week ago, I talked to the chief already, car went away, I followed him, make three major driving violations on his way, so I followed him, I thought I was going to the police station, he winds up at Starbucks on Virginia with five other officers there, I seen no sergeants, so it must not have been a meeting. But anyway, chief's gonna take care of that. The second thing I wanted to talk about, since you just did the salute of the flag, I'm wondering why your school police, when we go to the games, they don't salute the flag? They're in the gym, and they stand around and joking, and don't even salute the flag when all the kids and coaches do. You can handle that. The, then the good part of the police, and then I'll go to the second topic. I was involved in the incident, I think yesterday, day before, and I have all the car numbers right here, which I already told Pitts. Five, three cars, five officers, that all did a good job on some kind of family dispute at apartment building or by the VA hospital. They had three officers there, and I don't know if they could handle it, but then two sergeants showed up with donuts, joking there. They didn't bring no donuts. But anyway, I talked to Pitts about that and give him all the car numbers. I just put them on my phone. I didn't get the badge numbers, I didn't need to. So, that's enough of that. Then, the last thing I'm really gonna talk about, is here recently I had a bad experience with the VA hospital. I missed my funeral five weeks ago. I went there for a physical, and I never took medicine in my life, and I'm 68. In police work, I have been accepted as a reserve police with Sparks. Probably be the sergeant ahead of that, real quick. But anyway, they give me the wrong medicine, they put me in a coma, in and out coma, and going to city council meeting in Sparks, where I had to turn in a couple of police for not working on the job while they're in the coffee, BJ's Coffee Shop, while they're robbing the gal across the street. So now they don't go to BJ's Coffee Shop no more, none of the police officers, and eat for free. But, the school police, that, anyway, the last five deal, I talked to Pitts, and they're all very polite, and the sergeants were polite. They weren't bullies, like some. And, I had another topic, but I don't know what it was. It was probably, oh, well, that I am applying for the chief of police at the veterans' hospital, because they don't know what they're doing either, and when you have trouble, I say, "Call Reno PD." "Oh, we don't have to do that. We have our own jurisdiction here at the hospital." Well, that's gonna be real fine, because I don't change that. And then, they hassled me, because I kept falling asleep.
Thank you very much.
So he's gonna lose his stripes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ted Levatter?
Hi, thank you, city council. I wanted to just talk briefly today about a book called...
Identify yourself for the record, please.
Oh, sorry, Ted Levatter, for the record. It's a book called Free Lunch by a gentleman named David K. Johnson, it came out in 2008. It really talks about the unintended consequences of government subsidies. One of the topics that he covers a great deal on this book is the subsidies given to commercial sports facilities. And I think the information in this book really relates to a couple of agenda items that we had last week regarding graffiti and gangs, and the upcoming issues regarding our underfunded public safety, fire, and police. And I'll just read briefly from the book, from one section of the book. "Today, all over America, state and local governments lavish funds on commercial ballparks while holding public parks to a starvation diet and allowing buildings to deteriorate, grounds to go to weeds, and activities to grind to a halt. Cities switch from part-time workers who's, switched to part-time workers whose numbers nearly doubled during those years. The part-time workers work for low pay with few or no benefits, and they tend to have little training. Starving parks come at a high, come at a price much higher than rundown buildings and absent flowers. It also means idle young hands do not have the opportunities to play games, learn skills, and interact with others in healthy ways, but instead turn to what opportunities are available, often in the devil's workshop. With the passage of Proposition 13 in 1978, local California governments felt an immediate and sharp drop in property tax revenues. Spending on parks were all slashed. Within eight years, the Los Angeles City Park Staff was cut in half, and these cuts would have been deeper if it were not for a scheme devised by the Parks Director James E. Hadway that had to do with charging increased fees. These private funds would be used to supplement and enhance park budgets, but within a few years, this policy produced two systems of parks, separate and unequal. In prosperous areas, the fees flowed and parks flourished. In places where people of lesser means lived, not enough people had money to pay fees for recreation extras, so many recreation programs for children just ended. Many of these parks, 75 of which the city labeled officially troubled, were staffed with, one staffer had few balls and dry water fountains. They became dead parks." He goes on, I won't continue, he goes on to talk about how he's, in the city of Los Angeles, he draws a correlation between the funding and building of Dodger Stadium and the rise of gang activity. And I'm concerned that as we move forward and into the budget process, and we're gonna be faced with some tough decisions, I remind you that underfunding parks and police safety in favor of commercial ballparks can have a lot of unintended consequences, and I ask that you look very closely at this issue, and as soon as I return this to the library, you can go borrow it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Levatter. Melissa Price?
Melissa Price, I am the head soccer coach at the University of Nevada, and what I wanted to just bring to the council actually today was, we've been very active in the whole Moana Field process, from supporting it and also being out there when we first opened the field in the fall, and then this past weekend when the kids finally got to play on it. And one of my big proponents, as far as what we try to do with the community, is interact with the community, and one of the things that kind of came to fruition was this idea that perhaps we could host a university game on that field during our competitive season, one or two of our non-conference games, so rather than us always playing up in Mackey Stadium, is to bring the game to the community. So why I'm here today is to propose that idea, because there's things that would need to happen in order for that to be an NCAA hosted event. For example, we'd need to have stands brought in, potentially some extra restroom facilities, and we'd also need a scoreboard and a sound system. And some of that stuff, the university obviously has, but kind of seeing if there could be a partnership perhaps between the city, the youth sport organization, Great Basin Youth Soccer League is in big support of us being able to do this, and then obviously whatever we can do as a university to make this happen. I think it'd be great for the local businesses, getting the fans out there, we average 500 fans a game, I would think we might even get more out to a game like that. And, you know, there's also a sidebar that soccer's really supposed to be played on grass and not turf, and it'd be nice to be able to play one or two of our games during the season, until the university can get us a grass field and things like that. We do, actually don't draw some opponents because they won't play us on turf, so it might actually give us a chance to draw a really great opponent here for the local community, come watch us play. So just, for me, it's more of, it's more of a community partnership, and we do have a partnership with Great Basin Youth Soccer League, and we do a lot of things to help the kids and the coaches and the parents, and I thought this might be a great way, like I said, to bring us to them, and wanted to, I've talked with Sharon about it, and she asked me to come here and share it with the council, and so I wanted to make sure that we put it out there, and see if that's something moving forward, whether it's this fall or next fall in 2014, that we could potentially have happen. An ultimate goal for me would be perhaps one non-conference game and one conference game, or two non-conference games and, and one, and one conference game, we play all our games on Fridays and Sundays, so Friday games would have to be at the four, four to five o'clock timeframe, because there's no lights, obviously. And then a Sunday game would be a one or two o'clock in the afternoon game, and I know the fields aren't used on Sundays as far as for soccer. So there would be not really a conflict as far as our game taking away from the use of the community as well. So, that's why I'm here.
Thank you very much, Ms. Price. And as she mentioned, we did visit a little bit on Saturday for the opening of the fields, and we informed Melissa that the decision to use the field doesn't rest with the city council, that's through the relationship that we have with the youth soccer league, and they would coordinate the use of the field, but she would be looking for some potential monetary assistance, and that's why she was here, kind of planting that seed for people. Thank you. Bishop, Bishop Nguyen. Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you, council. Thank you so much for your support to the YES program, that is helping us reach 80-plus students in the Washoe County School District. We are planning to expand our program this year to all wards, and we have just undertook in, undertook a program called the Parent University, which we'll be doing and trying to engage parents to know the importance of helping their students and their children get through the educational system. We were fortunate to talk to Pedro Matinas, the superintendent, and others in the school district, to allow them to know that we are really trying to change the social behavioral mindset of a youth. And by, by your support in helping us get the material and the curriculum even stronger, and the training material to these children, they're wanting to go further into education, they want to graduate from college now, they are, go to college when they didn't have an aspiration to go, or to a trade school. So through your support and through you helping us get the message and keep the message going to help the youth in their minds to realize that greatness knows no limits, and that they can reach inside of themselves and find out that they can remove the mental roadblocks. Because as I talk to these young people on a daily basis, from every culture, they're dealing with mental roadblocks, feeling that they're not good enough, they don't think they can, they are capable of doing anything, but we're trying to sit there and not judge them, but be a mentor there for them. As I said in one of the meetings the other night, I was studying about King Philip II. He wanted to get his son a mentor, and I found out that he gave his son three mentors, and the chief, one of the most important mentors to his son was Aristotle, and that was, and his son was known as Alexander the Great, because he had mentors. I don't care what level you go to, we all need mentors. So I just want to thank you again for your support and your time.
Thank you very much, Bishop Nguyen. Good message. Christopher Corbett?
Good morning, city council. Christopher Corbett. I realize that my comments to the board this morning will bring no bearing to the conversation or the decision of the board from last week. However, there were a couple items that I wanted to bring up, but was not, unable to get them into the conversation, and this is basically just for your future reference and knowledge. I want to reference two Supreme Court cases. I believe that they establish precedents, you know, regarding the NDA possibly in the future. The first one is New York v. United States. This was a Supreme Court regarding low-level nuclear waste, and the federal government had created a regulation requiring states to either develop their own nuclear waste facilities, or they could work out a deal with a neighboring state, or they would have to accept the liability for that waste. Well, New York, state of New York, could not find anybody who was willing to develop a, a nuclear waste facility within their neighborhoods, and they could not find a neighboring state, so they sued the federal government. And the Supreme Court held in that case that the federal government could not compel states into regulatory compliance. And they specifically cited Tenth Amendment and the separation of powers. The second case I want to bring up is Prince v. United States, and that's P-R-I-N-T-Z. This was actually two court cases that were merged together. This was around the Brady Bill, and after they passed the Brady Bill, you know, it was mandated that background checks be done on all firearm sales. Now, initially, the federal government did not have the infrastructure set up, so they placed that burden on local law enforcement. And there were two sheriffs, Sheriff Mack and Sheriff Prince, that sued, and in this case, there's a very similar ruling where the federal court, federal Supreme Court ruled that, or held that the federal government could not compel local law enforcement into service. So I'd just like to ask Chief Pitts to keep this in mind down the road, if there should ever be a request for squad car, or whatever the case may be. Also, we're still working to push through Senate Bill 378, and we're asking people to contact State Senator Sager Blum at 775-684-1422, and, excuse me, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Mark, Markell?
Thank you, Mrs., thank you, city council members and city manager. My name is Mark Markell, and I'm a Conshon Arena resident, and I'm a victim of a drunk driving crash. I was a passenger in a drunk-driving vehicle, and I, I suffer from traumatic brain injuries, so I forget or I get sent, so I'm gonna read this. When I was released from the hospital, I was wheelchair-bound, but the Holy Spirit helped. God willed me alive to show you what can happen if you get in a car with a drunk driver or drink and drive. I can't walk. I, I have a walker. I use a walker. I have, yeah, I have, have to use a walker or electric wheelchair. I ride the bus now, I can't drive. This is all because I got in a car with a drunk driver. I can't drive anymore. I ride the bus. I can't, I can't find gainful employment. I can't have a relationship. I have trouble thinking and speaking. I've lost my wife and my children. When I was a young adult, I had eight drunk drivings, 23 reckless drivings, and 32 driving I just failed license, I tashes. I wear dentures now because I did drugs when I was young. I was, it was years after I quit doing drugs that I lost my teeth, but the damage haven't done. Now, now I'm just an example of what can happen if you get in a car with a drunk driver. It's my mission in life to give that message out, so don't let this happen to you and your family. Don't drink and drive or get in the car with a drunk driver. Parents, don't drive with, drunk with their kids in the car. And kids, listen to your parents because they were young one time, and listen to your teachers because they just want to make good choices of you. They're there to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. A good message. You said you don't speak well, but you certainly deliver a positive, important message.
Perfect example.
Yes, you are. Thank you very much. Jean Gardella?
Council members, city manager, other city employees and guests. Catalina, Juliana, Rayanne, Daniel, Gail, and Stephen the perpetrator, all dead. Seventeen wounded, 21 injured. Northern Illinois University, DeKalb, Illinois, February the 14th, 2008. It's all about rights. The National Rifle Association would have you and I believe that the, that it is all and only about the rights and the Second Amendment to the Constitution. It is not all and only about those rights. Our founding document, the Declaration of Independence, recognizes that we all are endowed by our Creator with certain unalienable rights. Among them are the rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. There are thousands of headstones and cemeteries across this country that mark the graves of mothers, fathers, children, friends, neighbors, and wives, loved ones, who like all of us had been endowed with, by their Creator with certain unalienable rights. Among them, the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, but those whose right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness was extinguished by gun violence. When we have rights that intersect or conflict, we have to decide which right will prevail. With 31,940 gun-violent deaths, and many more wounded each year, it is clear that our federal, state, and local governments have not successfully met their first and highest primary responsibility to protect us and provide a safe and secure place from gun violence. The federal government appears paralyzed and unable to act in meeting its responsibility for safety and security from gun violence, apparently leaving it up to you. In the end, it's all about the rights related to this issue. Each of you must decide which right must prevail. Our right to life, or the right to own an assault rifle. Our right to liberty, or the right to possess magazines of high capacity. The right to pursuit of happiness, or the right to purchase a gun without a background check. You have, you, if you have made the right, the decision that rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness prevail, then the answer to the question, "What can I do to reduce gun violence?" begins with two things. First, take an action individually to contact your Senator Reedan Heller and Congressman Amity. Send an email, write a snail mail, and ask them to support good and comprehensive, effective legislation to reduce gun violence in our country. Secondly, take an action as a council to pass and forward a resolution supporting the adoption of federal legis, legislation to reduce gun violence, and send that resolution to our senators and our congressperson. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jean. Message well heard, and you've delivered it many times. We appreciate your persistence. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just two announcements today. First is the, the city of Reno Emergency Communications Division, the 911 dispatch operations was recently awarded the CLIA accreditation. This is considered the gold standard in public safety. This accreditation represents acceptance of an ongoing obligation to continue the quest for professional excellence by working toward compliance with all applicable standards and any future standards put forth by CLIA that may be applicable to the city of Reno. This ensures that Reno's Emergency Communications Division will operate under the most current policies and practices used in public safety dispatching. So congratulations to the dispatch center. The other announcement is that we are proud to report that the American Red Cross has recognized two city of Reno firefighters for their longstanding service, whether on duty or off, with real hero recognition awards. The first is Rosa Myers, who in addition to firefighting, also established a program called Random Acts of Kindness. The program exists to help those in need beyond the initial emergency. And second is Tammy Lopez, division chief, who retired last month after 25 years of service, was also recognized as she was the first woman promoted to fire suppression captain and chief level officer. Among her accomplishments, Lopez is also a nationally recognized expert by the IAFF and the IAFC on firefighter health and wellness.
Very good news. Thank you, Mr. Manager. And, Mr. Klinger, I think the CLIA awards chief also secure us with lower insurance rates, isn't that so? That's another benefit that we get? Yeah, I'm seeing some nodding heads.
Honorable Vice Mayor Steve Pitts, actually, I think Robert could, could, could answer that question. No, the CLIA standard, as Mr. Klinger pointed out, is, is the gold standard, and we work very closely with communications to achieve that, but I'd have to defer to Robert.
Robert Chisel. Well, it helps in the sense that our fire accreditation, that the fire agencies look at, rate region and the response times, and they look at that to say, "How is the command and control of our dispatch in accordance with generally accepted principles?" I'd also like to say, we were the first agency in the state of Nevada a number of years ago to get the CLIA accreditation, and we're very proud to keep in that accreditation going, and we're hoping to have the CLIA conference come to Reno in 2015 also. So, we're working very hard with CLIA to continue our efforts.
Thank you. We appreciate that. It's a team effort, and we certainly appreciate it. Okay, approval of the agenda. We have a couple of polled items. We have item E3 and J1 are polled, so that staff can do some additional work. Proclamations, in just a moment, will include declaring the 17th of April is Pathways to Aviation Day. Presentations, our economic development update will describe to us activities with Chris, oh, I'm gonna get it wrong, Chrysalis, right? Chrysalis, I knew I had the enunciation wrong. Public comment, we've certainly just heard. Public hearing at 12:15 will be the auction for the South Meadows Parkway, APN 163-200-04. We do not have any public hearings tonight at 6 o'clock. Are there any changes?
I have a question on E3. That was polled to, yeah, can you give, can I get an update on that?
E3 should be polled for discussion, so we can make some minor changes.
Poll for discussion. Okey dokey. All right, so the only polled item is J1. All right, with that clarification, a motion for approval? We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Cash dispersments. Motion for approval, please?
Motion for approval.
Mm-hmm. We have a motion and a...
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Delgado, thank you. Mr. Hall, would you join him?
Madam Mayor, city council, I am proud to present the Pathways to Aviation to Mr. Tom Hall. Whereas the wonder of flight is never as magical as when you see it through the eyes of a child, and whereas the Reno Air Races Foundation was established in 2004 as a way of introducing youth to the fascinating world of aviation, while highlighting the role of air racing and shaping the industry, and whereas Pathways to Aviation, as part of the Reno Air Race Racing Foundation, was launched in 2008 as a speaker series to bring instruction and programs highlighting the advancing aviation to our youth and community, and whereas the Reno Air Racing Foundation is pleased to announce that Mark and Sir Angelo, corporate vice president of Sierra Nevada Corporation, and chairman of SNC Space System, and Paul McFarland, lead flight director for the Challenger Learning Center of Northern Nevada, will both be speakers at the Pathways to Aviation Educational Program on March, on April 17th. And whereas through the partnerships with the University of Nevada Reno, Reno Tahoe Airport Authority, Challenger Learning Center of Northern Nevada, and Sierra Nevada Corporation, the Pathways to Aviation Program seeks to inspire local youth through the aviation and aerospace educational activities, grants and scholarships, and to pursue educational studies in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And whereas the city of Reno recognizes the important contributions of the Reno Air Racing Foundation and its Pathways to Aviation Program, including its support and promotion of the speaker event to be presented at the University of Nevada Reno on April 17th, 2013. Now therefore... Now, therefore, the mayor do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April seventeenth, two thousand and thirteen, as Pathways to Aviation Day.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hall, want to make a few comments? Too bad the mayor isn't here. He was one that was really excited about the program when you brought it in and very supportive, but please...
Thank you, Council. Thomas J. Hall, for the record, former chairman and trustee of the Reno Air Racing Foundation. About six years ago, I met with a professor at the university, David R. Thomas, and we talked about how we could get children interested in aviation, and we came up with the logo or phrase, "Pathways to Aviation." We found that when someone wants to be a lawyer, they go to college, they study pre-law, they go to law school, they take the bar exam, and they're a lawyer. Voila. Are there any lawyers in the audience?
Just you.
I see Marilyn over there. If you want to be a doctor, you go to pre-med in college, you go to medical school, you take the boards, and all of a sudden, you're a doctor. Well, no one really knew how to become an aviator or a pilot, and so we talked about the path. We need a pathway to aviation, so that's the way we came up with this. And we talked to some other people in the education field, and they said, "A speaker series is the way to advance in the greatest number exposure to kids for the grand world, the great world of aviation." So we've done that many times. And then also, we reached out to the University of Nevada Reno and said, "You know, we need to talk about the teachers in our community." So we created the Pathways to Aviation Speaker Program at UNR. We sent invites to all of the math and science teachers in Washoe County School District and all school principals to teach the teachers the message that we wanted to give. And we had a reasonably good response, but not crescendo, so we started branching out to our industry, and there are sixty businesses in Reno that have some aviation relation. Chuck Alvey of Edon at the time gave me the list of the sixty, and we sent them notices. And then it turns out, there's many pilots in our community, so we reached out and sent them invitations to our events. And this Pathways to Aviation Program at the university, which is April seventeenth, we're featuring this year a speaker from Sierra Nevada Corporation. As you know, Sierra Nevada Corporation is a billion-dollar-a-year company located in Reno, in Sparks, actually, and their two owners are graduates of UNR, so we're really proud and pleased that they could come to join us. So this is our fifth speaker program. The first dealt with an engineer designing a supersonic jet transport that could go from San Francisco to Tokyo in two and a half hours, Richard Tracy, for eight, in luxury, of course. The next was Jack Schofield, a UNR resident, and he went to one of our programs, said, "I want to do one of those." I said, "Be our guest." And who would turn down a resident of the University of Nevada Reno? The third was the commodant of the former commodant of the U.S. Air Force Academy came to talk to us. Last year was the Perlin Project. Some guys wanted to fly a glider to ninety thousand feet over Antarctica, which is almost unimaginable, but they're going to do it, apparently. And this year, we have the Sierra Nevada Corporation Corporate Vice President. In the process, I was able to invite Buzz Aldrin, an astronaut, to campus and to our program at the university, annual speaker, and we had seven hundred and fifty people out. And next year, we might have two astronauts come versus with the help of Sierra Nevada Corporation. On the other hand, I've got a contact to the president of Gulfstream, which manufactures airplanes, not Boeing, but Gulfstream, which is very outstanding. So we're very excited about this. I appreciate Sharon putting me on the calendar today. We're having resolutions from all our three jurisdictions, plus the Airport Authority, and we really, really like to invite you all to come to our program on the seventeenth. It'll be a chance to see what some of the aviation people in the world do. And the last plug is, on June twenty-second, we're going to give free flights on our Young Eagles Pathways to Aviation Program. We've given over six hundred kids a free flight in the last five years, and we're going to do it again. And if you have kids, grandkids, or neighbors that want to come fly, come up to State Airport at eight AM, June twenty-second, and you'll get a free flight and a free pancake breakfast. And if you can't turn anything down, don't turn that down, okay? So I appreciate your time, and we'll see you around, and we hope that this will spark some interest from the board here and from our community at large. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Again, that's the seventeenth at the student union up at the university. All right, presentations. Barb.
Good afternoon. For the record, Barbara DiCiano, Communications and Community Engagement. I am going to take but a moment to introduce David LaPlante. He's with Chrysalis, and it is an amazingly exciting project that I'll be using every day, I know. So with that, I'm just going to give it over to Mr. LaPlante. Thank you.
Everybody knows you by too many other associations. David, good to see you.
Good to see you, too. Name tag. Oh, you're not mayor, bud. I've left my glasses in my truck, so I'm fine. But I can read this, so thank you for having me, Barbara. Embarrassing, I actually wrote this down, because I wanted to be respectful for your time, and since I'm rather ADD, I can go thirty minutes in like a breath, so. So hi, my name's David LaPlante. I landed here in Reno about twenty-five years ago on a skiing scholarship to the University of Nevada. I came originally from Aspen Crest of Butte, but since nineteen eighty-eight, I've made this my home. I love it. So for the last twenty years, I just think about this the other day, I've been that guy who's kind of always looking five to ten years out, trying to get folks to look into the crystal ball and get a first mover advantage, particularly technology. So twenty years ago, just realized, anniversary of this month, I was in a room talking about white player tracking systems were a vital part of casinos. Ninety-five, it was advocating businesses to get on the World Wide Web. Ninety-seven, open source software. Ninety-nine, email. Two thousand and two, mobile text messaging, mobile web. Two thousand and six, Twitter. You get the point. I'm an addict of new technology, so that I'm here and unplugged from the matrix again. Appreciate it. So my knack really is to live or try to operationalize, embody what life will be like in five, ten years, and try to pass that on, sort of like prying out insights and seeking premature hindsight. So when I was invited today to talk a little bit about what I'm seeing in the crystal ball and how our company, Chrysalis, plays into that future, I want you to think about the world we live in today, how it is magnificently and yet simultaneously, maybe even dismangely, more complex than it was even ten years ago. Pre-Facebook, pre-iPhone, pre-cloud, pre-Youtube, pre-3D printer, Iraqistan, drones, depression. And guess what? It's only going to get more complex and crazy, not getting simpler, more crazy. So we as humans here, our user experience of the world, if you will, is largely the result of one particular software application. The roads we drive on, the utilities below us, this room, cars, the gadgets we use, the homes we live in, all because of a design canvas called AutoCAD. We've really shaped what it means to be human, how we define reality collectively and individually, how we interact with the physical world because of AutoCAD. Now, for all the cool things we can do now, we are suffering. Dr. Robert Keegan of Harvard eloquently summed this up in his book, "In Over Our Heads: The Mental Demands of Modern Life." Our modern way of life, as cool as it is, comes with costs, is literally outstripping our central nervous system to ability to keep up. Life is and has become too complex for most people, and certainly some governments, and it's even more difficult to keep pace. So you think about this, keeping up, behavior change issues. Let's rattle off the things we don't want to hear. Fifty percent of adults are obese or overweight, forty-nine percent kids head in that direction. One in two people will have a preventable chronic disease by 2020. Eleven percent of children ages four to seventeen are diagnosed with ADHD, and that's a sixteen percent increase since two thousand and seven. Thirty percent of adults don't sleep well, and sixty-nine percent are stressed out. Raise your hand. Unhealthy lifestyles are the number-one threat to employers and our economy. Just think of the time, money, and energy spent just arguing about how we should deal with healthcare, let alone actually doing something about it. Nearly two-thirds of our adults are morally ethnocentric and can't comprehend, let alone contend, with world-centric problems that face us in the future. Eighty-eight percent of citizens mistrust CEOs and believe business exploits them. CEOs concurrently have the lowest emotional IQ of all leadership. And fifty percent of adults have a fixed mindset inhibiting any change, especially healthy change of any kind. It's kind of depressing. It's costing a lot of time, money, and suffering. So I can go on about all that, but the point is, is all this suffering, and most of this is preventable, it comes down to our individual and collective behavior. Yet despite the billions that are suffering, there are millions who are not, and among them are tens of thousands of people who are actually doing quite awesome. So how do we get their experience, their expertise into the hands of the billions that need it affordably in a way that actually affects behavior, can scale, and with results? This has been the conundrum, really the conundrum of our time, and what we've taken on as a challenge. So Chrysalis, the first thing we have deployed is the world's first AutoCAD for behavior change. We aim to give thousands of people who have expertise in affecting real and meaningful behavior change an AutoCAD-like program for letting their creativity and expertise flow onto a design canvas. So just like AutoCAD, where you design an iPhone, you can design actual behavior changes and then deploy it. So the second thing we're doing, and that first thing took like two years, the second thing we're doing is we're matching that AutoCAD program up with a publishing platform. We basically want to be the Kindle for behavior change. Behavior change programs can be designed and published just as easily as an ebook, especially you have the expertise and knowledge. But where today you might think, "Oh, hey, I want to lose some weight. I'll go onto Amazon, shop for a book on how to lose weight, and download that." Problem is, all the behavior research shows that books really don't work that well. Coaching, support, practice does, but that doesn't scale and is at least very inconvenient, inconsistent, and more often than not, expensive. We aim to fix that. The real challenge of the next century is not political, economic, or healthcare, it's simply behavior change, and our aim is to deliver any behavior change to anyone, anywhere, through a world's first cloud-based platform for human change. So we're after the angry birds for smoking cessation or diabetes, crowdsourcing from all the expertise that lives all over the planet, the ability to get that knowledge out there. So the housewife in Perth, Australia, that figured out a nifty little way to stop yelling at her kids can actually disseminate that with the ease of publishing an app onto the publishing platform. So, hard shift, not a lot of time. So how does this play into the Reno equation? We love it here. This place is awesome. I don't need to tell you guys any of that. Big challenge for us is there's no startup capital. More startups get their seed funding in Series A every day by noon in the Bay than we do in Reno all year. But somehow with Chrysalis, we've been fortunate, we've threaded that needle and raised most of our capital we need from outside of Reno and have not had to relocate. But I can tell you, the pressure for us to relocate to the Bay is there, and it is persistent. The innovation capital and the innovation talent lives down there. We're here. We know we can attract the talent and the capital over the long run, as long as Reno is perceived to be vibrant and a community willing to be able to make and adapt to change. I spend a lot of time looking at Reno through the eyes of entrepreneurs and leaders of technology and capital from the Bay. Since most of my social network is down there, I get the opportunity of seeing folks outside looking in, and hardly a day goes by where I don't have to explain to one of them why I choose to live here and grow a business from here, which is great. But I do get to hear, obviously, what everybody's outside perception is all the time. So little things. I'm not going to, you guys probably hear all the things you do wrong every day, and that's bad behavior things, so I'm going to focus on the good things. The Whitewater Park, awesome. That stuff sticks out there. When I walk into a meeting down in Palo Alto and say, "Oh, yeah, where are you from? From Reno." Oh, we went up there, Whitewater Park. You hear those little things. So Whitewater Park, that gets noticed. All the stuff Jason Geddes is doing, that stuff matters. Not just supporting, but championing a thriving, young, creative class prepared for 2020 that aims to retain our best labor and talent is mission-critical. The Holland Project, for example, is one of our better unsung tools of economic anti-fragility. They help stop the bleeding of talent to San Francisco and Portland that businesses like ours, Chrysalis, need to survive and grow. The future rewards creativity and design. Arts and culture is economic development. The hackathons you've been supporting, equally awesome. Please continue with those. So in the vein of behavior change, I'll wrap up with this. Look at your leadership through a lens of affecting behavior change. Do you have a fixed mindset or a growth mindset? Is your way of being to play it safe, keep out of the headlines, go with what is tried and true, stale and copied, just like the city to the left or right of us, making Reno into another Generica, or a true standout, making it weird like Austin? I encourage all of you to read Jim Clifton's book, The Coming Jobs War. I say this as an economics nerd who's read like a hundred of these books this year. No one has as recently done a better job of explaining how and where economic vitality starts and stands. Again, that's Jim Clifton, The Coming Jobs War. Here's a quick synopsis. Can we really look to the federal government to help us out locally? Absolutely no. Statistics are clear on that. State government, no. City government, partially. It's the collective spectrum of community leaders and city government with a keen understanding, not denial, of what the world will be like in 2020, 2040, have a target to move to that work together, they revive, thrive, local economies. It's look as, not look at. So the world in five to ten years will not reward communities, do not take innovation serious. That's hard, especially when most people here probably wake up wishing it was two thousand and three again and not two thousand and thirteen. Becoming locally sustainable, that matters. Anti-fragile, absolutely. Rocking the boat is the kinetic energy of municipal economic growth. Business as usual is economic competitiveness dying. Comfortable is economic vitality withering. So simply having a changed mindset and always dreaming big can be enough. Everyone is fond of saying, "Think like an entrepreneur." Well, that translates into taking risks and getting comfortable with being really uncomfortable. So with that, thank you for having me. It was great to see all of you. Glad to be out of the matrix for just a little bit. Our plan is to help thousands, if not millions, people have happy, full, productive lives from our little headquarters here in Reno, and if there's anything we can do to help you, let us know, and if there's anything you can do to help us, please throw it our way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaPlante. Really inspiring words, and I think that Councilman Chevi just summed it up perfectly. You are Reno's Steve Jobs. Cut that. Yeah. You can't leave. You're not leaving. You can't leave us. Thank you very much.
Very inspiring. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any items other than three that anyone wants to pull for discussion? Have the mayor on? That's what the... Okay.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
E2 and E4?
E2 and E4. Anything else? We have a motion for approval of all the remaining... Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, City Council, Steve Hardisty with Public Works. This, before you, is the unexclusive easement for the U.S. Bank property up on Virginia and then also on Ryland Avenue. The one change that we wanted to bring to you was in Section One, on the second page, we wanted to add the words depicted on Exhibit A and B and describe more fully in the meets and bounds as set forth in Exhibit C. And Exhibit C will be attached to the agreement, and that would be the changes that we wanted to make.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. What is the nature of Exhibit C?
It's a meet and bounds. It'll be describing what's basically in the picture of...
Okay. Go in and survey the little area?
Yes.
Okay. Are they paying for that?
I believe so, yes.
That sounds good. Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Including you, Mr. Mayor. We heard you. Motion carries unanimously. E2?
You know, I had a question about this. This is a lease for the fleet shop operation for the fire department, and I'm wondering, in light of, well, the broad analysis done of all of our real estate assets, one, and then the fire divorce, two, if we thought this facility for cost savings, do we need to downsize? Is there an opportunity to merge it with our other corp yard facility at a, you know, an efficiency? And I'm just on a comfort level that we're looking at this from a real economic perspective from our budget.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Mayor's manager. For the record, Tim O'Malley, Division Chief, Reno Fire. Brandon is out on the drawing board. I'll try to answer all parts of your question. The shop, in the staff report, you'll see that we've gone through quite a few changes over the past ten years or so. The shop has been expanded, and then we've contracted again. The shop has been expanded, and then we've contracted again. As we contracted, we also saved money from the rent. We basically cut the facility in half, including the yard that we stored the apparatus in through deconsolidation, based, obviously, reduction in the amount of apparatus that we service. With the correction, here, on 4/27/11, when council approved a Second Amendment to the lease agreement, we reduced the square footage down to 17,650 square feet, and also reduced the monthly rental charge as well. So I think as we've, during consolidation, contracted during deconsolidation, the facility, in fact, we were a little bit ahead of the curve on the budget. Other part of your question with the corp yard, the apparatus that we currently service, the corp yard in the bays, so that's one of the reasons why we're currently not working out of the corp yard. It's a matter of space.
Madam Mayor, if I may jump in, Councilwoman, we did actually, City Manager's Office looked at the issue, and the chief is exactly right. If you go out to the corp yard and just look at the size of the bays, I don't know when that facility was built, but it's a very old facility and was obviously built at a time when equipment was much smaller than it is, and there just simply is not room in those bays, and it frankly becomes a safety issue for the working on that equipment, that it just does not fit in those corp yard bays. And so we made the decision to keep a separate facility for the fire apparatus.
This is a one-year...
Correct, a one-year. I believe it's five years renewable every year.
Okay, and the cost to move was some $148,000? So, okay.
We also run our logistical section out of there and all our supply, so that we're using it for dual purpose.
Madam Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. We specifically coordinated with the fire department and the City Manager's Office to reduce the square footage of this facility because of deconsolidation. In addition, when we negotiated the lease at that time, we reviewed comparables and we had our outside real property consultant look at the lease rate we obtained, and they said it was below fair market value, so it's a very good lease rate in negotiation. So I wanted you to have that background.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion, please? To approve. We have a motion and a second for approval, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E4. Ms. Brekis?
I have a question about this. In the staff report, it talks about the first time, I guess, we've been approached, and we've contemplated licensing a trademark that we hold or for the little, biggest little city motto. Is that true?
Yes, as a commercial entity. We have done nonprofit agreements through the City Attorney's Office.
Okay. I guess, you know, as a matter of process, you know, it's kind of a concept that we're entering into that we haven't gone, and I thought maybe it'd be, you know, could be... So there's really two issues, is do we want to license or, you know, go out into commercial enterprise this trademark statement? And two, we have someone who wants one. And so I thought rather than jump to, oh, here's their cup and what they want to do, is really maybe the broader concept is, is this something that we would want to entertain commercially? Do we want to have parameters on how we use these? And I'll just use the example, and I'm not saying one way or another I'm in favor or against, I haven't really given it, you know, I'd like to hear more, is this is a cup for, you know, presumably alcoholic beverages, which, you know, not a problem. It's what people do when they come to visit our casinos, it's a gaming casino. But, you know, parameters for if it's going out to a commercial enterprise. And two is, on the concept, is the money. I don't see anything, you know, frankly, if we were going to talk about the policy, if someone wants to walk in the door and even apply to use our motto for commercial purposes, I know we've got legal reviewing it, I know we've got her office reviewing it, a $500 application fee to just walk in and ask, I think. And so we're even only charging them, the agreement, I think, says $50?
Would you like me to address that for staff recommendation?
Yeah. How'd you come about this?
Staff, when we were considering this application, we were thinking that the City Council may want to look at the proliferation of the City of Reno's brand. Other, we want to make this a money-making enterprise is definitely a policy question, but staff was thinking, no, maybe we don't want to make this a money-making enterprise. Maybe we want to get the City of Reno brand out there, they're going to take their cup to their home, maybe it's away from here. So that was the concept behind there. In the agreement, we have asked that they supply us with the numbers of the cups sold, and we can see if it's worthwhile later if we'd like to have a higher fee. But if that's not the direction that the City Council would like to go, that's just the direction that staff thought that we would recommend.
And I can appreciate that as a beta test, you know, I really can. I think that's very innovative as to beta test, and I kind of saw it this way. I just, you know, maybe rather than have an agreement with this party here, bring the concept to us, let us kind of chew on it. It raises a lot of questions about, you know, what I've read about with Vegas when they got their big brand, you know, what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas, and how, you know, other cities have used their brands. So maybe I would have liked staff to kind of elaborate on this concept a little bit more, let us chew on it from the policy rather than have someone with an agreement in their product waiting in the wings. So I'll open it up to the other members to weigh in on their thoughts.
I think it's really smart to look at this as a brand, obviously, and especially since the biggest little city is coming back really strong. And so I do think it's essential to really look at the direction of how we want to use it, how we want to protect it, and maybe, you know, if we do end up with sales from using this brand, that it goes towards, you know, a dedicated source, whether it's parks or education or something to that effect. But I do think, especially you're seeing so much more movement with the slogan, I think it's a good idea to start laying out the parameters of, in which we use it. And I mean, I get the cups, but I mean, it is alcohol, so I don't know. It's one of those things you do want to kind of look at so you are, you know, in compliance with certain things, but I think it's only going to, which is a great thing.
There's a three-year agreement as well. They're not allowed to use our trademark without coming back to the City Manager's Office to ask for permission after three years, so that's another part of that.
I guess, I guess my question is, their cup says, you know, the biggest little casino in the world. I guess my concern is, does this agreement somehow restrict other gaming properties from using that same slogan? And that would be my concern, is, I'm all for, you just said what happens... Any other slogan for Vegas? Okay. My point is, the biggest little city in the world is our slogan, and I think it will forever be, whatever form of it, within reason, as long as it's not misused. That would be my concern with this. I don't want to price something to the point of deterrence of using our slogan, but I want to know what restrictions this puts on other properties in using that same slogan.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. All this agreement does is provide rights to this specific entity, which is Circus Circus. It would not provide rights to third parties, but through this agreement. If a third party uses it, then it would be referred to legal, and we would look at what, we would send a cease and desist letter at that point in time, and then follow through with any legal rights you would have.
And it wouldn't be exclusive. We would be able to offer the same rights to anybody else that would require...
Yes, very good question. We made this a non-exclusive license because, you know, you may want to use it for movies, for all sorts of outreach, for other business support, so whatever you would like to do, it is not an exclusive right.
We've never had anything like that. Not commercially. In the history that we look back with the, with the City Clerk's Office, we haven't found anything. So we have done nonprofit agreements, like I said, administratively, but this is the first commercial request.
Okay, have we ever enforced anything for not getting the prior approval of using the slogan?
Tracy Chase, again, Reno City Attorney's Office. Nothing has come to our attention that someone had used it in violation of our service mark. So no, I do not recall any specifics that we went out and actually enforced it, but that being said, our office did not, you know, review every business in town to see whether or not they utilize this.
And I think we've probably seen it, and I'm not, I'm not offering this as a suggestion to staff or anybody, we need to go out and start, you know, policing this, but we've all seen those t-shirts in the windows of various souvenir shops in town, and shirts that, you know, people do for their home parties and at the balloon... or whoever, that absolutely do disparage the city. And that's really where my comment is coming from, is I think that the community owns this, I really do, and I think that it has been our moniker for so long. I'll kind of liken it to, you know, you don't have to pay royalties when you pull up a Mozart or a Beethoven piece and play it in a public setting. Do you, however, have to pay those fees when you do a prince or somebody even knew it? And I think that the community owns it, and the community should be able to use it with some discretion, and I'm very comfortable with a $50 fee. I don't think that us looking at this as a profit center would be as prudent. Certainly, it might help our bottom line by a smidge, a very small smidge, but I don't think that would be an impression. I really think that the discussion in our planning session, that we did want to revisit, are we really? And do we want to rename ourselves every two years or 15 months or whatever it is? And I believe that we should have some open access, and $50 is comfortable from my perspective.
My only concern was somehow this giving the impression that there's a lot of paperwork to so... I don't have any problem with this either, I just don't want, it is the...
As far as the administrative process, the Circus Circus emailed our office, the City Manager's Office, and then we created a contract that we were both comfortable with on our end and their end, and then it came forward to City Council. I don't think that there were too many steps for them to go through.
I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm not so sure on this one. I think that, you know, cities need to be very smart, and we may not be embarking upon best practice by a city. I think maybe two or three hours of staff time could look into a few other cities and see how they do control their brand. And if this is our brand, I'm not sure it is a public domain sort of thing. I think we have a service mark on it, we hold it, and it's something valuable. This may be the best practice for anyone, whether it's a company or a nonprofit, or a city, or a university. And so I think it is part of our asset base, and I think we may be going off in a way that is not best practice, it might be kind of dated thinking, frankly. I'm not opposed to doing this today because it is the first one and we'll get some information, but I very much feel on the fee schedule, minimum, walk in the door, $500, we had an attorney write a contract, what does that cost us? We need to be thinking very entrepreneurial, particularly, you know, every dollar counts at this time. I'd like to see that on the fee schedule, and I'd also like to see staff investigate how other cities do that, if the body felt like going down that route.
I increase the fee to 500, we're penalizing Circus Circus coming forward to us proactively, many others don't bother. So that's my, that's my... I'm not in favor of increasing the increase at all at this point, but...
Some of staff's concerns with increasing the fee, another concern was that we may have to start going after people who use our mark, and is that the best reason, or you know, what staff should be doing with our time? So that's another policy question on the increase.
And I also think that it really is a marketing issue, and I worry a little bit more about the legal issue as well. I mean, I know there's a piece of that, but really, this is a marketing issue, and I think Deanna knows very well how popular this is getting and how much movement it's getting, and I think she's thought a lot about where you guys are going with this, and so maybe, you know, at some point, come back and, you know, show us kind of what your big plans are, because I know that they're in the works.
Okay.
I'd like to know what the big apple...
Mr. Mayor, are you there? Do you have any comments?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I would like to know what Dallas does with the big D, and I'd like to know what the apple, the big apple in New York does.
Kind of, again, it's that public domain, that it's just the way you know that city.
Well, I guess the question is, do we go on this today, or do we hold and do, you know, these kind of questions? So that's maybe where we should lead this decision-making.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think, I'll state earlier, I believe, is to have Circus Circus, you know, we continue with this because it's already being done, and not hold back, not hold back the Circus Circus from coming forward, but something that we can start to look at, and it'd be good to see what the other cities are doing with their slogan, so that's something we can see in the future, but not hold Circus Circus back from this one, I don't see why we should.
Any further discussion? A motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve with a...
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. You're included in that count, Mr. Mayor, we heard you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to disconnect for a little bit.
Okay, sir. Watch that sun, I hope you have sunscreen on. We'll move on to the public hearings. Madam Secretary, have all notices been sent?
Yes, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Item F1, the South Meadows Parkway.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Steve Hardesty again with Public Works. We previously supplied with a script, Madam Mayor.
I got it, here.
That means you don't have to read it.
So the item before you is the auction and the possible acceptance of a bid for the property located at South Meadows Parkway.
And pursuant to Resolution 7823, the City Council adopted on March 13th of 2013, it's this time that we put into place and set for the public auction of the possible acceptance of the highest bid for the city-owned property, ATM 163-200-04, located on South Meadows Parkway, one block east of Double R Boulevard, which is currently a vacant lot. And B, the minimum bid is the highest decreed value of the property, which is $418,000 cash. C, we will open, when we will first open, we need sealed bids and make a call for oral bids, and oral bid must exceed a written bid by 5% to be accepted. Anyone wishing to make an oral bid must sign in with the City Clerk here. Your name will be called to come to the podium to make your oral bid at the appropriate time. The City reserves the right to reject all bids in its discretion.
Madam Chair, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, if I might assist at this point. Madam Clerk, do we have any sealed bids?
We do not.
Madam Chair, if you would call for any oral bids at this time?
Are there any oral bids? Seeing none?
Seeing none, then there's no further process you need because there is nobody actually bidding for the property. The next step is, to be able to sell a certain property, the state law requires that you go through this process two times until you can provide it to a real estate broker. So we will come back with you in the future on another repeat of this process. So we will come back with you in the future on another repeat of this process to see if there's any interest in the public.
Well, I, I'm a little confused, you say to provide it to a real estate broker. What do you mean by that?
Well, the state law allows you, if you have gone through the public process of publishing the availability of the property and holding a hearing to attempt to sell it at fair market value, then at that point in time, you can turn it over to a real estate broker to see if he can find somebody interested in purchasing the property. And then that would come back to city council for approval.
So we can essentially list it?
Yes.
But we can also decide, we don't want to list it, we want to just, you know, keep it off the market and try this in two years, right?
This particular property can only be used to fund a fire station because it is part of the South Meadows PUD. So it has restrictions on it. You certainly could not sell it if you chose not to, but it would be a funding mechanism for future growth of a fire station down in the south Reno area.
The funds derive from?
Yes, yes, and it can't be used for any other purpose.
Okay, okay. Okay, so.
So staff will come back to you at a future date?
Correct, we don't need to take any other future action today.
No, you can just close the public hearing.
Indeed, all right. Again, all open, is there any comment, any request? Seeing none, we will close the, the public hearing and move on to item G, ordinances. There are none. H, resolutions, H1.
Resolution number 7829. Resolution granting community pride grant funds to the Desert Heights Elementary School Parent Teacher Association to purchase outdoor fitness equipment for their playground to improve the health and fitness of their students in the amount of $3,000.
We have a motion for approval and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously, H2.
Resolution number 7830. Resolution granting community pride grant funds to the Northern Nevada Literacy Council to purchase security cameras and lighting for the safety of their facility in the amount of $5,581.
We have a motion, second and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously, H3.
Resolution number 7831. Resolution granting community pride grant funds to the Rain Shadow Foundation to install eight public art sculptures in the Cleracre Lane and Whittaker Road roundabout in the amount of $6,781.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously, H4.
Resolution number 7832. Resolution granting community pride grant funds to the Rain Shadow Foundation, B, the Change Project, to purchase paint and supplies for the Whittaker Road wall mural in partnership with Reno Artworks in the amount of $4,481.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously, H5.
Resolution number 7833. Resolution granting community pride grant funds to Control Burn to present the Compression Art and Fire Event on the City Plaza as part of our art town in the amount of $1,000.
Motion and a
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously, H6.
Resolution number 7834. Resolution granting community pride grant funds to the Jesse Beck PFA to purchase and install sod for their playing fields in the amount of $10,500.
Motion to approve. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously, H7.
Resolution number 7835. Resolution granting community pride grant funds to the O'Brien Middle School Parent Teacher Organization to purchase sporting equipment for their athletic programs in the amount of $2,000.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have no ordinances. Public Works, J1 was pulled, J2.
Madam Mayor, Steve Hardesty, Public Works Council. Before you, it was staff report to get your direction and discussion regarding the petition to expand the police tax or the Police Special Assessment District downtown. Even the chief's got me switching it back to a tax district. We started our petition drive back on September 1st or September 6th with the first set of letters out. Those were certified letters to nearly 1,300 people. We followed up with a second set of letters in October. A third set went to a limited amount because we thought we might be able to do the petition and get it all done. We did a kind of a directed petition drive to a bunch of the businesses in the downtown, local businesses in the downtown. And then we inadvertently found out that by contacting those people, that we left the top floors of the Arlington Towers out. So we got letters off to them. And so when it came down to the bottom end of it, we ended up with about 1,432 letters and people that we contacted regarding this drive. The requirements for the petition, you need to have 10% of the people petitioned within the district. So we needed 100, about 143 response, favorable responses. We got 152. So we ended up with 10.16 or 10.61%. So we've made that requirement. The requirement, the other requirement is 25% of the assessed value represented by those folks. That would have been $44,958,000. We received $34,518,000 for 19.19%. So we didn't meet it on that level. And without meeting both criteria, the petition won't, won't pass the state requirements. So staff is recommending that we stop the petition drive at this point. Clauses within the previous petition that the council approved last March would mean that we revert back to the 2011, 2012 process, which would be straightly on assessed values. There wouldn't be any areas or anything else, and it's strictly on assessed values. And staff will be coming back before you after conversations with city manager and the chief of police, recommendations further regarding the police district will come back to you.
Oh man, you guys went through that fast, I ran from the Ross Manor. So, I apologize. I didn't hear Steve's presentation. But what I'd like to say is, it sounds like there's some changes in the works. And are we doing a public meeting for the staff report like in May, I think it was? Okay, but prior to this public staff meeting, could we please request to have the changes that he's looking at as far as going on the assessed value to the Regional Alliance for Downtown RAD? And I'm sure he's going to bring it back to the SAD, the Police Tax District is what I call it. That's not the true acronym, that they come back to both of those venues. And if I could work with Steve to set up a time and place for the RAD, I'd highly appreciate that. Because the changes are, are being made and it needs to come back to all the stakeholders. And through RAD, we can offer that back out to the stakeholders. Thank you. Pardon me? Oh, Roberta Ross, Ross Manor. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Timeframe required by legislation is I have to have the assessment letters and notices in the mail no later than the 20th of April. That being a Saturday, they'll be in the mail probably 18th or 19th. So if they have an idea of what their, what their estimated assessment will be and the process and everything else. That also will notify them of the public hearings, which will be held during the budget process for May 21st. I believe it's at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So that'll be the time and everything set, so, so that's what's coming up.
Madam Mayor, if I might, and maybe Steve can clarify this. I just want the, the council to understand that the, the assessment district that's going to move forward for the next fiscal year is going to be based on the 2011 resolution.
Yes, it'll be similar to 2011. They'll be strictly based on assessed values. There won't be any Area 1, Area 2, or Area 3. That was part of the resolution that was adopted last year. The hopes of the expansion, with the expansion, that hope would have been that we would have been able to admit the requirements set forth in that resolution. And since the resolution, or since the expansion's not going to go, that's where we're at.
And so any, any changes, just for council's clarification, so any changes to the, the size of the district or the assessment methodology, that would not go into effect until next fiscal year? So basically next July, just to be clear.
And confirmation that RAD will be involved in those conversations?
And we will involve RAD in those conversations.
So are you referring to fiscal 14 or fiscal 15?
Fiscal 15 is when the changes would go into, any changes would go into effect. So what, what's going to go in for fiscal 14 is based on the 2011 resolution.
You know, I have, I have some questions and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not up to speed. So the assessment district has to be renewed every year, is that the NRS?
Yes, NRS requires that we come back before council. We have to send notices out annually and participate and have a public hearing during the budget process every year.
Okay, and so when you say it'll go in the 14 budget, you know, assuming it continues and gets that affirmative vote? And how many years have we had the downtown police assessment?
Started in 1996, I believe. It was a tax district and was changed in 1997 to a, to a special assessment district.
Has it ever failed?
No, but it's part of the budget process. There's a process for eliminating the districts. So unless that happens, basically it's a public hearing to hear objections and protests. But the council pretty much has to agree it as presented unless they make changes prior to as laid out in the legislation.
Is the statute such as it is on the hard infrastructure projects? That if the city's putting in 51% or more of the value, then can override the protests?
No, that part's not really a part of this.
Okay.
Inasmuch also that the, since it's based on assessed value, government agencies don't have an assessed value because we're zeroed out and exempted. We don't, we do pay, we do pay a portion on the parking gallery because of its commercial and also on this building because of the commercial values, so.
Is the, you know, and this is one thing, because I sit on the downtown maintenance assessment district, which does not come up every year. Is there a map that shows the two overlays so we can see, you know, where they are? I just, I've really been looking for maps on these two.
I can provide both of those to the council. That's not a problem, I have those to you. I'll get those to you emailed probably before the day's out.
Okay.
Also, the maintenance district is required, the same as the police district, to be reviewed annually.
Oh, okay.
But they're, they're, they're done together, so it's kind of, they're kind of blurred.
Okay, and maybe also a map that shadows, like a third color, where you were trying to go? Because it sounds like you had the numbers, but not the assessed value. So it makes me think that you had property owners and residents coming in, but maybe one or two big property owners polled on this, is that what happened?
There's a couple of things that happened. First of all, the major properties did not want to proceed. So, so that's, that was one thing that was true. Also, a lot of, a couple of the larger condominium units, they still have a lot of properties that haven't been sold. So that's basically a big lump of unsold properties yet. They didn't, the lump part didn't respond. We've got quite a few, we even got good support from Arlington Towers.
Okay.
And they were part of what was supposed to be coming into the district. So a lot of, we got a lot of responses from the people in the, in the condominium units, businesses. There was some opposition, I believe it was from RAD. So we didn't get a lot of business support from the downtown areas and then the major casinos, so. I guess we had pretty good opposition from everybody, so.
When you say the major casinos, aren't they already in it?
They're in the district, but they didn't want to expand.
They didn't want to expand the geography?
Because if we would have expanded the geography, also we were keeping the areas and their assessments would have been maintained artificially high. They, that's what the, the district would have been agreeing to. And so they weren't in favor of that, they wanted to go back to the assessed value area.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if I might, just councilwoman, the, the major property owners downtown were not necessarily opposed to the expansion of the district. But it was the way that the formula was being calculated was that their assessment was being held higher than their share of the assessed value. And so they were opposed to that piece of it. In other words, their assessed value is, was I think 34%
In the, in the expansion.
Of the expansion. And we were holding them, I think, at 43%.
Because they have higher assessed value, even though they've all experienced tremendous drop in their assessed value. It's just, they're just the big assessed value players within this geography, right?
No, it, what it was is the, the formula was, as, as Steve pointed out, there was different areas that were calculated. And their area, they were held, they were going to pay 43%
Oh, okay.
No matter what their assessed value was.
It was the calculations is the concern.
But, you know, and I don't know, you know, obviously I'm asking a lot of questions because I haven't followed this. But when it seemed that for this is police, that, you know, there should be a differential because, you know, they generate more of the police response needs than me condominium dweller in Arlington Towers. I mean, is there, is there some room within the NRS to kind of work in that?
We still have, we still have the special, special benefit requirements that we have to work with within a special assessment district. So some things we have to be, the fact that the casinos agreed last year to artificially pay more than their assessed value, should, they should be applauded for that. But to continue, to continue that, they didn't feel that that was in their best interest. So these are things that I think that the city manager and, and the chief and I can, and the rest of the staff can work with to try to figure out some options for the future. And we will bring those back so that, not this coming year, but the following year where we could make, you know, recommend some changes and some adjustments and stuff to that.
Okay, okay. Mr. Manager?
Yeah, the only other comment I would make is, is in addition to RAD, we did commit to work with the major property owners as well on this. And they have committed to work with us, so.
Ms. Ross, do you have a question?
Yeah, I thought I heard the year 11. Are we going back to the fiscal year 1112 versus 1213? Okay, so what we're doing is last year we were assessed at a certain value. And that's what Steve's saying is that the casinos said they would pay a percentage. And I believe that was 51%. And what Mr. Manager said was absolutely correct. But what's happening now is you're going to take the casinos back to 43%. And I don't know where that number comes from. But all of that has been changed from last year to this year that we were not informed of that. I mean, we've been in communications, but that drop is going to make the people on my end, the assessment goes up. There's approximately $1.3 million that has to say this cup's full. So when the casinos were paying 0, 151%, that other 49% was split by everybody else but for the major property holders. Now that they're going down to 43%, that, that 57% is now going to be what we used to be paying 49%. So there's a big jump. And it's not like just going back to, yeah, last year, it's going back to two years ago. And this was a part that I was trying to get to come to RAD and come out to the stakeholders in regards to what is actually the changes of what we've been presented and what the changes are are two different things. And that's, in my mind, not a correct thing. And I want to go on staff's comment here about the Arlington Towers. And I think this is important, and I wasn't going to, I was going to kind of hold my breath. But on December 12th, a second letter was out from staff saying, we've sent you one letter that says, don't respond to this if you don't want to do it, but here's your second letter. Here's your second letter from city staff that we want you to do this. As late as two weeks ago, staff was walking door to door, knocking on people's doors to get them to go in this direction. I think that is incorrect, I think that's incorrect of city staff to do that. Because he sent out one letter, another letter, and it's, it's just, it doesn't seem proper to me for two letters to go out and people didn't respond by saying no, which was a direction in this letter, and staff go out door to door, improper. My, you know, I can be corrected on that, but I, I don't like going back two years, jumping a year. The other thing is, very clearly in his staff report, it says he was given direction to go to residences. I know I'm commercial, hands down, I know I'm commercial, I know I have commercial residences. But it says residences. Last year, I went along with the casinos and said, okay, this year we're not going to do anything. But when it says in there that he's going back to residences and it's not all residences, again, I'm commercial, I can kind of get that. It's just not, some of the stuff that's not happening, I, I just don't think is correct. In particular, going back, what I consider two years is not good. Because when they go from 51 to 43, big change to the rest.
Could we get a response from the attorney's office on the two letters and then follow up knocking on doors? Does that come close to soliciting for an intended outcome?
We can take a look at that. I, I mean, I don't have an answer for you right off the top of my head, but we can definitely, we can
we can look into that.
Madam Mayor, if I might, and Steve maybe can help me with that. I think the reason that it's going back to 2011, 2012 is because that's the current resolution. I mean, that's not a choice that staff made. I mean, that's just the current resolution. So with this petition failing, it goes, it defaults back to that 2011 resolution. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve.
Yes, sir. What the actual resolution says it goes back to the December 3, 1997 apportionment method. And the apportionment method used in 2011, 2012 is what we'd be using. It's the apportionment method. It's not the numbers or any of the percentages or anything like that. It's the apportionment method itself. So that's what's being changed. That's what we're going back to is the original apportionment method.
And Steve, the original apportionment method for council, just so council understands this, does not have a fixed percentage for the casino properties. It goes back to, it's based on assessed value, which is, I think, Roberta's complaint, is that in the current, in the current arrangement, I think they're fixed at 49%.
50%.
50%. And so that fixed percentage goes away and it goes strictly on assessed value.
Yes, sir.
At what year's assessed value?
It'll be based on the current year's assessed value.
Yes.
It's just the methodology. We go back to this methodology that's in this.
We're still using, because the, well, the areas are going to go away, but I'm just using the areas as an example of what the individual groups would actually be paying, so. But the areas will go away. So it's all based on assessed value.
Okay, so it will all be on assessed value. Will you, you know, who knows what assessed value's done since 2011? I mean, I think there's some uptick maybe in the residential, but you're right, we still got shadow, foreclosure, things going on, but commercial. I mean, can you bring some of those numbers back to us by the next meeting to show us how things are looking a little bit?
I can give you a rough estimate. I can tell you that the Belvedere has gone up excessive, I mean, gone up quite a bit. It's almost doubled in their assessed values. The other locations, like the Montage and the Palladio, basically, they've kind of leveled off to actually dropping a little bit. Businesses have pretty much, stayed pretty much the same. Casinos, right now, have pretty much leveled. The Eldorado has gone up a little bit, so they're going to be picking up a little bit more of the assessment for everybody else. But the bottom line is, is that using those groups as an indicator, but not as a group, the casinos overall have dropped to about 40% rather than than the 50 that they were paying.
So it comes to the residents and the smaller, non, you know, big gaming properties?
Yep.
Steve or Mr. Manager, it's sounding, so please correct me if appropriate, it's sounding like the two groups have still never been brought together at a table to discuss their understanding and provide their input. Is that accurate? That the RAD, the residential, and the casino owners, the major properties, have not had a joint meeting with you where all can express and share input?
No, they have not.
Why, why would we not?
We've had, we've had public hearings, I mean, we've had meetings here at City Hall. We had a pair of those. We've met with the executives from the casinos. We've also met with RAD. And I've been quite open to phone calls and everything else regarding the thing. As far as bringing those three heads together, no.
Ms. Sheevy?
This might be redundant, but I think it'd be a good idea to come back and, I mean, I think, you know, this is not, this is not fair for you guys. What is your recommendation, Roberta? I mean, I know that you're really out in the community and you're, you talk to a lot of people. How, how do you think?
Roberta Ross, for the record, thank you very much, is that if, if we go back to, if it was originally the assessment value, which I'm not necessarily, I have to look at that a little bit because I can't say standing right here that I agree with that, but I'm not saying I disagree with it either. But you have to remember, the reasons that the casinos were doing the larger amount is because of the larger population from Virginia Street to Center to out and out and out. But then the whole thing was taken around the assessments. Last year, and last year, I agreed the same way the casinos did, let's let it ride for the year, let's go forward with the same percentages. But I don't, I have to think about a little bit, Hillary, in regards to that. The 43% is, my thing is, my outtake on the whole thing is, and this is Roberta Knox, I'm not speaking as RAD, that's very clear, is that our assessment values, there's changing so much. I just got my assessment value dropped probably 35%. It's not, it's, everybody's dropping. The housing, some of the housing is going up. I can tell you in Arlington, it's dropping, you know, but there's all the values all over the place. But the 43%, that's pretty scary to me because it's never been that low, so it's going to take the other assessments up. I think one of the things that my evaluation is on it is Steve has worked his heart and soul on this for a long time, is I think it takes a statistician, and my recommendation would be, and Steve has done a wonderful job and tried really, really hard, I think it's time to give it to a statistician, to give it to a numbers person because it's a numbers game. And he can give you every spreadsheet, he's given me spreadsheets this thick, but I, that would be my recommendation, Hillary.
I'm just concerned because I feel like we're not all on the same page, and that bothers me.
Yeah, my concern is that it sounds from the surface that the stakeholders were not brought into the conversation earlier when maybe they should have been, and some of this could have been clarified. It's too bad that we've gotten to this point. My bigger concern is with the multiple letters and the knocking on doors, if that has violated something.
We were brought into the conversation earlier, but some of our recommendations, we feel, were overlooked and not given justification why.
We do have a request for public comment, if we can take that. Michael Ponney?
Thank you. Michael Ponney, on behalf of the Eldorado Circus Circus and Silver Legacy, just to Councilwoman Sheevy's question about what other proposals are out there. What we have been working with Steve for some time, and it suggested a while back, is the expansion, the geographic expansion of the district. We think that's an appropriate step to help everybody out. Just split the pie up among more people. And you still use the assessed value methodology that you adopted when the statute got changed in 97, that you've used since 97. That's the fair method is property values go up, your share goes up as they go down, it goes down. That's the appropriate method under the statute to allocate between the properties. But to help with Roberta's concern, we thought it best to just, let's expand the district. These officers are going down 4th Street to go to Gold desk anyway, why not bring in those properties? They're right next door to the baseball stadium. Why not include that in the district? And as you saw from the responses you got from the petition that Steve sent out, a lot of these folks who are not in it now are willing to join in. The concern we had was this arbitrary fixed percentage on any class. So that was the reason why we didn't support the petition that's in front of you today. But we do support and are willing to work with staff and the council on bringing forward a new petition, just expanding the district geographically and just spreading that existing cost out among more people so everybody's costs go down.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Madam Mayor, I just want to make a comment, and again, Steve can clarify this for me if I get it wrong. My understanding is, based on, I believe it's state law, that we are basically out of time to change this, which is why if it's going to go forward, it's going to go forward based on that current resolution. For, at least for the next fiscal year.
Yes, that's true. We would, any kind of, any kind of changes to the apportionment method would require a public hearing scheduled between, again, this is the state, this is state law, between the 21st of February and the 1st of March. You have to hold a public hearing during that period for, to change the apportionment method. And that would give us enough time to change the apportionment method and get the notices out again by, by April 20th. One of the things I did want to clarify is that the boundaries and all of the other items that were in the petition, those were approved by council on their January 18th meeting last year. I know you guys weren't here, but, most of you weren't here, but those are the guidance, the guidelines that I used on the petition method. Following meetings and everything else, request to change this and request to change that. I was following directions from council, and those are the council, those are the directions that I stayed with. We could have changed, we could have changed directions and resend another petition out, and resend another petition out, and resend another petition out. So what I did is I proceeded what I was directed to do, and that didn't meet with a lot of approval from, from individuals, so.
Steve, no matter what direction you turn, you run into roadblocks, and you juggle those better than most. But it seems that we're at two questions here. The legal that I expressed earlier, and I don't see Jonathan still here, but, oh, there you are, couldn't see you. Jonathan, how much time will you need to, to check into two mailed notices and now knocking on doors, the kind of that, that concern? How much time do you need? Could we reschedule or continue this discussion to our very next meeting? Get your answers, is that adequate time for you to evaluate that? And then the secondary phase would be back to you, Steve, and manager. Does the timeline accommodate a joint meeting? Heard you loud and clear that we've held public meetings, but we're still hearing that the parties haven't necessarily, at least most recently, sat down and expressed all of their concerns. Can we accommodate that within the timeframe?
For the record, John Sheeman, Deputy City Attorney. I think those are not, those can happen on parallel track, they're not like linked. I mean, so.
Right.
I mean, the question as to whether or not it was appropriate for staff to go around and knock on doors under, I mean, that, that doesn't have to be resolved tomorrow or in a week. Yes, we'll get you an answer as quickly as we can, but that, that shouldn't tie up or delay, you know, the, what Steve's talking about in terms of the public hearings and whatnot. So yes, I can, I can endeavor to get an answer back really quickly on whether that is a problem or not. But I, I would just say you don't need to necessarily tie that to the district moving forward and what we're doing because it's, they're just unrelated issues at that point.
I think, Madam Mayor, if I might jump in, and I don't know if Jonathan or Steve can help me with this. I think the problem is right now is that you either have to go forward with the petition as presented by Steve, or you have to go back to the old methodology. I don't think you can change it at this point in time. So the action today is to withdraw the petition that Steve put forth. So I certainly think if it was the council's will, you would, you could take that action today because, again, you can't bring forward another methodology for the next fiscal year at this point. It's just beyond the timeline.
But we could hold the petition and keep it live. I mean, they could come in and protest.
Just, just for clarification, I think you're operating, you're operating from the standpoint of a standard SAD. So we are beyond the point of the formation of the district.
Okay.
So, and that's the difference, so.
I do misunderstood that.
So, yeah, the petition can continue on, you know, I mean, it can, I mean, until, until people at the table say, "All right, we're done," or "We're not done." But it's, but yes, as the manager said, the shot clocks kind of run out on this, at least for this fiscal year. 2015 is another matter. The petition could carry on, there could be some additional discussions, negotiations, that type of thing, but for this fiscal year, I think we're pretty much against the wall at this point.
You know, knowing that this was in process before we got here, knowing that it didn't come to the council meeting until essentially, if March 1 was the date, you know, it didn't come here till April, you know, we don't really have a lot of choice. I guess, you know, if we're having these big discussions, for me, it's almost like going back to step one and saying, what are the service levels that are amenitized by this assessment that maybe helps with the discussion on the expansion? I mean, is this $1.3 million out of the PD 25, what are you at, 25? What's your budget, 30 million?
Excuse me, ma'am, Steve Pitts, for the record, on behalf of the Reno Police Department. My overall budget?
Yeah.
It's about 54 million. Yes, ma'am.
I thought that was the old number. I had that number in my head.
You did have the old number, 66 is where it used to be.
This is 1.3 out of 54 million dollars PD budget.
Just roughly, and just for your information, we pay out of our budget about, it fluctuates between, I'd say, 450 and 520 a year into that fund. Thank you.
I mean, we've got a year to look at it from all angles then, right?
And how does the action that we take today address the expand the district? That would not be in fiscal 14. It would only occur, if it were to occur, it would be 15.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or discussion?
So, so just for clarification, the discontinuance of the petition drive, should we decide to do that today, basically doesn't have any impact on anything. Well, what?
And maybe Steve can explain it better than, than I can. The, in fiscal year 13, the current fiscal year that we're in, there was a fixed amount that was applied to the casino properties of 50%. If we go back to the previous methodology, it goes strictly based on assessed value. The casino's value is less than 50%. So it's, it's all relative in the district. All of the assessments may have gone, or the assessed values may have gone down, but it's what's your relative assessment compared to the other properties, and the percentage that the residential properties will pay will go up.
In, in reality, Councilwoman, you're correct. What you were talking about, we're going to end the petition, it'll have no relevancy really on the future district. The resolution that was adopted last March 14th, if we didn't change the apportionment method, which we didn't do, because the expansion may have met that requirement, we could have gotten away from that, but since that's not happening, actually, the numbers that I've got ready to send out will be brought to you on the 21st of May, and we're all set. So actually approving this, you know, staff recommendation to end this petition, it ends the petition. We can start June 1st or July 1st, we can start discussion for a new one if we want, if that's the direction from the council. And we can also, you know, between the city manager and Chief Pitts and staff, we can probably come up with a little bit, with some more recommendations.
Madam Mayor, if I might, Steve, my question is, though, the methodology that we're using to assess properties in the current fiscal year versus next fiscal year will be different.
Yes.
And we'll have discussion about those methodologies.
Let me ask one last question about this.
Correct.
Is, are you noticing on the collection side of these assessments due to the foreclosure that a lot of are not getting collected and we're having to lean a lot? I mean, is that going on at all?
No, ma'am. What you've got, there's a difference between what we do in our regular street assessment districts and what we do with this. One is guided under 271.
Okay.
Downtown police and maintenance is under 268. These are collected through your property taxes. So it's a totally, totally different setup.
They come with the property taxes and?
Since somebody always owns the property, we're always getting big.
Someone always pays on these.
Madam Mayor, Steve, can you explain to council the difference in the allocation methodology, the year that we're in versus what it will look like next fiscal year? I think that still needs to be clarified.
Okay. The year that we're in right now, we have three areas. We have an area that basically comprises the hotel casino properties and all the rejoining properties and any casinos. That's area one. Area two basically is all residential properties. In most cases, it's just, just the condominiums, there's two or three houses. The third area is everybody else. All the businesses, the vacant lots, everything else that has property, that is area three. This year, this current year, the casinos play, that area number one paid 50% of the assessed value. Residential's paid, I think it was 19, and all the others paid 31. I think that adds up to 100.
And that'll remain for fiscal 13, 14?
That's what we have right now. That's current. Now, what happens within those areas, the assessed values now are balled up into those areas and everything is proportionately spread within those areas. Next year, there will be no areas. Everything is spread strictly on assessed values. So you're going to take an individual property, you're going to take the total of all the assessed values, you're going to get a percentage, and you're going to take that percentage and multiply that into whatever the assess, the assessment that we are collecting, and that little, that'll come out with an assessment. And what we do for the county? And what we do for the county is we create a rate. We give them a rate and next year, the police rate will be point 009, 097 will be the rate for next year. And you can take your assessed value and you can multiply it times that rate and that'll give you the assessment.
So my, I go back to my question, the continuance or the discontinuance of this petition has what impact on that?
Excuse me, can you read?
The continuance or the discontinuance of this petition that currently is out there has what impact on that formula going forward? You said it doesn't have any impact, but it does.
Well, it, it, the decision today to end the, to end the expansion petition is an action to end the expansion petition. Everything else that we're going to be bringing before you in May is already laid out. The resolution that was adopted on March 14th of last year reverts us back to strictly basing the assessments on assessed values. So one, it's just, today is just a simple action of ending the petition drive.
Madam Mayor, if I may ask, Steve, Steve, on the, under the current allocation methodology, you have the three areas and area one, which is the casinos, is 50%. Do you know what their percentage will be under the, when we go into fiscal 14? What, they're 50% now, what will they be?
40%.
40%.
Everyone else gets jumped up and I, you know, sitting on the downtown maintenance assessment district, which, you know, is kind of overlap, I'm starting to hear, you know, I'm a resident, I'm ju, my assessments are going up and so I, I have a hunch that this would follow through on, you know, on this too.
That's why it was, I get back to the discontinuance of this petition by our action today, what impact that has, because I'm hearing conflicting reports.
If, if they were to walk in here tomorrow with, and, and believe me, I've had hope in getting this expansion going. I didn't pull the, setting the public hearing date to expand the district until yesterday. That would have set the public hearing date as May, May 8th. I mean, I was, I was hopeful that we were still going to be able to get this to go through. The time's out, it's like John says, the shot clock's finished. We don't have time to set a public hearing, to create a new district and get the notices out by the, that would make it on the 17th, because I have to have 20 days ahead of the public hearing. I'd have to have everything in the mail by the 17th. We're just, we're just out of time. And so the petition itself can go on, but even the petition said that this would be for the 13, 14 year, so.
Madam Mayor, if I might, and, and just to remind the, the council, I mean, the reason this petition is not going forward is because we didn't get that 25% of the assessed value. So if you don't have the property owner's support.
I mean, for 13, for 14, we could concebably, conceivably, you know, drop the rate or lower the, the total number we want to generate, drop service if we find out that, you know, resident here is going to get a big hit. And so you could bring us back scenarios like that, right?
Yes, ma'am.
But you're telling us that there really is no other action available to us than to approve staff recommendation today?
Yes, ma'am.
What's, what, what happens if we do nothing on this item?
That's an option.
What happens?
The petition will just, just lay active, but.
Madam Mayor, I think if you, if you do nothing today, I mean, I think the petition still dies unless you get to that 25% threshold and you're going to revert back to the old resolution anyway.
Guidance to staff is that bring it back under the old resolution, let's bring us some options. If we see, you know, a certain group, that resident group, taking a hit of 10, 15%, I don't know if that, we want to do that to our residents. I mean, they're the people who are, you know, driving our vision for downtown living.
Councilman Breckus, I'm, I'm with you 100%. I mean, don't believe, I'm happy about standing before you and telling you the petition can't, can't advance. I'm not excited about that at all. I've worked two and a half years on this program or on this project and I've thought of every, which way possible to try to, to make it fair and stable and.
Madam Mayor, we can certainly bring back options for the council, but what I will say is if you, and we'll bring back options of lowering the rate, but what's going to happen when you lower that rate is you're going to be cutting police officers in the district, is what's going to happen.
It doesn't cut officers, period. It, I mean, we can, there's prior, priorities to be set on where, you know, our, like we set graffiti last week.
You could, you could certainly, you're correct. I mean, obviously the council sets the, the budget priorities and you'll be, you would have to add, I guess maybe the other option is you'd have to add general fund to it to make up for the loss of the assessment revenue is what you'd have to do.
But we've said a couple of times that we've established, and I will give as a lot of credit, that we had a magnanimous consensus when we were at our, our annual planning, when we were thinking that bigger picture. We had very clear agreement to that vision where we, we need to go. I think this is an example of making the tough decisions to ultimately get us to that, that bigger decision. I think that fiscal 13, 14 is messy, uncomfortable, I'll call it uncomfortable for us, but we have an opportunity to bring more involved thinking and comments into the process for, for 14, 15. Is that correct? Another question from Ms. Ross. And Michael, if you have any other questions, you're certainly welcome.
Ross Manor Apartments. So the thing that I talk about is statistician. We've been working on this for two and a half years and Steve has beat it to death. We need to change that MO on how we're looking at it. He's done as best as he can, we're here two and a half years later, we don't have a conclusion. The letter that I told you that was sent out on, I think it's December 12th, I must have lost my glasses running, is there's a petition here. This is a petition saying how our taxes are going to be changed. This is not being followed today. Since the day we've gotten this letter, it's changing to going back, reverting back to the old method. So we have not received a letter, which he's now saying he's going to send out on a whole new petition letter. He said he sent out three letters, this is our second letter. I didn't get a third letter, because the third letter only went to certain people, it didn't go to everybody. And that, I believe, is what it says in the staff report. But this is not what we're going for, this is not what he sent out to all of us, it's now being changed to where we're looking at the assessment value to everybody. And if I can approach the bench, I'll give this to you guys.
There's too much uncertainty here for me on a number of topics. I, I think I'm getting some conflicting reports and I, I'm not comfortable, I'm hearing there's no negatives of doing nothing at this moment, so I, I'm not comfortable in, in supporting the, stopping the, the petition simply from a, I don't hear there's a negative to it. I'm not saying there's a pro to continuing it, but I'm hearing there's no negative by doing nothing today. I, I don't have enough information, I'm getting conflicting reports, I'm not comfortable with it.
So would a better position for us, for the council currently, be today to continue this item to our next meeting and in that time allow staff to kind of give us bullet points and scenarios?
Yes, real impact numbers from what the casinos and the property owners are working at. I don't have, we don't have that information and I think it's pretty sure for us to have a position without having that real world, those real figures in front of us.
So can I have a motion for continuance to our next, next meeting, correct?
Motion for continuance.
Motion to continue to our meeting of the 17th, I believe it is?
Correct.
Second.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Gnarly, we understand, thank you. Mr. Manager, do we have a reading on when Cadence may be available to us?
I have a text.
Oh, she's close. Well then, why don't we move on to the K items and then come back, because we have a call in for the J4 as well. So let's move on to K1, Boards and Commission Appointments, Urban Forestry.
Madam Mayor, actually, do you have your, I'm sorry, I'm the, I'm the Urban Forestry Commission person. I, I recommend that we make the, I motion that we seat the three, actually, there's one, one reappointment and there's three appointments and I motion that we appoint those individuals.
We have a motion and a?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. There's Cadence. Wow. Do you need a moment?
Just a moment.
Okay.
Can we go to this?
Yeah, then why don't we move on? We'll give you a chance to catch your breath and get your, your documents together. Would you, J4, Madam Mayor? J... Yeah, we need to get Councilman Dorch by phone. Why don't we go ahead and take L1 while we're getting one by phone and allowing Cadence to get her materials together? Future agenda items.
The chief just left and I, I wanted to get an, a future agenda and update on the graffiti removal. It may be a little premature, I don't know that they've even hired anybody yet or, but some statistics on that would be just kind of a brief update. And the other thing, given that in our legislature today, we're talking about gun issues on campus and we had a gentleman speak and public comment, I know that the chief and I spoke briefly out with regards to police officers doing their reports on school property. There was a program back east somewhere that, that we saw that seemed to be on the surface a no-brainer from a police officers doing their report work while in a school location and simply all it took was a, a laptop and a desk. And what it did is it drove up presence and it drove up the feeling of a secure, a more secure environment and it gave some of the students and the faculty more of peace of mind. So I know the chief and I spoke about this a while back and I just wanted to get on, at a future meeting, an update on kind of what the feedback was from the, the school district and if that's getting any traction.
Anyone else? Thank you.
I have an item for next time. As you recall, you know, lessons learned from university farms, one of those for me was that we have a little confusion about some parcels that have been zoned and the zoning of the, recently annexed and what the zoning is. And the, the applicant, they had two consults and they, they both thought it was one zoning. We all agreed at the hearing it was another zoning, so there are questions about that and it also came up with a property in southwest Reno back in December. And so I'd like for staff to return to us with a, a status report on how many properties have this ambiguous zoning that have been annexed, what they feel they can do administratively with the requirements of the zoning ordinance to fix this, if there is an administrative fix, if council action is required on some of these properties that have ambiguous zoning on a case-by-case basis, and what we need to do to the zoning ordinance in the future going forward to make sure that we can annex properties and know what the zoning is when we annex them and apply zoning. And, and so I'd like this item to be drafted broadly enough that the council would be able to initiate a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to, to make sure we, if we have a problem, we could correct it right then going forward and then we'd also have to do the backward looking. So that's what I'd like to see related to annexations, zoning on the agenda.
Anything else? Ms. Sheeby?
One, one thing I would like is, and I don't know if it's under, falls under here or not, but a tour of the properties that the city does own.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Madam Chair, Tracy Chaser, Reno City Attorney's Office. On the tour, is that something, Councilman Sheeby, that you would want as a body? Because you'd have to post it, that just, so think about what you're looking for.
That's why I thought that I had to bring it up here, but I mean, I guess.
Yeah, if you want to do.
I know what the interest is.
Right, but, I mean, if you want to do it as a body, we could post that, but if you individually want to do that, I, I think you can make those arrangements any time with the manager.
Is that okay? Okay. Yeah, individually.
Anyone else have any items? Okay. Cadence, are you ready for us? All right, we'll go to, oop, J4, do we have Dwight on the phone? All right. Welcome, Mr. Dorch. Oh, okay, all right. Item J4.
Just for the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney. J4 is kind of a cleanup item, just a little technical item in the Goldman Sachs case that the city has there. As part of your staff report, you'll see a letter from Joe Pfeifer, the lead counsel from Fishman. There is another firm, the merchant firm, Merchant Powers Firm, and there is a question about if they engaged in some unethical conduct. It doesn't impact the city's case in any way, it wouldn't impact how, you know, our, potentially what we could recover. At most, it would impact how that money would be distributed amongst the attorneys, but the, the recommendation and the city attorney's office concurs with it, it would be to terminate the agreement between Merchant and Powers LLC and the city in that case. And under the charter, you hired the firm under a six-sevenths vote, so you would need to be able to make the same vote to terminate, so. Any questions?
I just had a question. I know we have an arbitration set, is that, do you have to go through some filings with the court and sub people in and out?
No, not at this point. And if, if, yeah, the council has said no, we just need to terminate at this point and Mr. Pfeifer will take it from there, so I think we're good.
Then I'll, I'll make the motion to accept the staff's recommendation. Is there any further discussion?
I think you copy. What do you need? Here.
Okay.
Did you second it?
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have, Mr. Dorch, do we have you with us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second to discontinue the contract for legal services. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We've met the super majority, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Bye.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to J3, Cadence. Back to a little bit more sane world, is it getting crazy in Carson or just very hectic?
Good afternoon, this is Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council for the record, Cadence Matievich, Assistant City Manager. It is in fact very, very busy in Carson City. We had a five-hour Government Affairs Committee hearing this morning, fast approaching the First House Committee passage deadline next Friday, so anticipating that there will be lengthy committee meetings from now until that deadline. Number of the committees will be meeting over the weekend, trying to get all of the bills that still haven't been heard, heard in committee and passed out. So it is in fact a very busy time. My apologies for coming in at the end of the meeting. The Senate did pass a bill today to increase the speed limit to 85 miles an hour in certain locations, so they can get that thing to the governor before this thing's over, I should be able to make it on time from, from now on. I have a number of bills to bring free to you today, seeking council direction on them. Details on those bills are included in the staff report. The first one of those is Assembly Bill 248. It's a bill that's brought forth, the primary sponsor is Assemblywoman Fiori. You can see from the list there, it is, has 57 sponsors, so a, a number of support for this. It's a bill that's brought forth, the primary sponsor is Assemblywoman Fiori, you can see from the list there, it has 57 sponsors, so a number of support for this bill, and our recommended position on it is to support the bill if it is amended. And what it seeks to do would be to revise provisions relating to certain criminal offenses involving vehicles. And it's modeled after legislation in other surrounding states, particularly legislation in Arizona, where a number of moving violations, if you will, what are described as sort of run-of-the-mill moving violations, failure to come to a complete stop, you know, five miles over the speed limit, making those instead of criminal offenses, civil offenses. More serious offenses that are enumerated in statute, such as driving under the influence, would remain criminal violations, and the penalties would remain with that. With all of the others, the penalty would be lowered, the maximum penalty would be lowered to $250. We do have some concerns that that would result in reduced revenue to the city of Reno, and so we are in discussions with the bill sponsor, the primary bill sponsor, to see if perhaps there is a middle ground that we might reach with her. We have heard evidence from other communities that have passed this, however, that because the penalties are decriminalized, they find that in many cases, rather than coming to court in an attempt to get it dismissed, so that they wouldn't have a criminal finding on their record, that the violators just go ahead and pay it. And so, there is in some cases, actually, communities that have seen increased revenue, even though the fines have been lowered, because they've got greater payment and lower costs for collection. So, we're certainly, as I mentioned in conversations with the bill sponsor, would be concerned about the fiscal, potential fiscal impact to the city increase caseload for the municipal court, but believe that there may be some workable solutions that would address our concerns and still allow the bill to pass. So, with that, we have a recommendation for support if amended.
You know, my concern, when you talk about traffic violations, is not the fiscal, it really is the safety of our streets and our pedestrian environment. We think we are trying to bring back our urban neighborhoods, and it's only going to happen with us having safe streets, and we have huge traffic safety pedestrian issues in this community, and statewide, I believe. So, in the hearing, have any of the safety, public health folks shown up and said that they're concerned this would have impact on the safety of their neighborhoods and business districts?
Councilwoman Breckus, the bill has not yet had a hearing, so I apologize for not stipulating that at the beginning, it has not yet had a hearing. The information that I've gained from talking to law enforcement professionals in Nevada who've been speaking with folks in Arizona, that has not been brought up as an issue of concern of something, an unintended consequence that they've seen in other communities, but certainly I can look into that further.
I mean, you haven't heard anything about safety and pedestrian safety and...
Not as of yet.
Cyclist's safety on this?
But, Mr. Manager, we've heard from you and staff preliminarily that in our budget process for this year, the police department, the chief is looking to expand our traffic enforcement, correct? I think there were three areas, traffic being one of the three.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and council members, that is correct, our PD is requesting some additional support there. Given the budget constraints that we're in, I don't know that we'll be able to, you know, obviously it'll come to council, but I don't know that we'll be able to approve all those requests.
And would the impacts that you made reference to, Cadence, the monetary impacts that could come from this without modification, that would really play into restricting us from being able to do that, correct?
It certainly would. Reduction in those revenues impacts the general fund, which is where we fund those positions, and so, we have been loudly voicing our concerns about the fiscal impact to us. We were requested to submit a fiscal note on this item, and we did do so. Other cities have also submitted significant fiscal notes on this with respect to the costs to process these in their municipal courts, and also potential loss of revenue if, in fact, this cap is placed on the penalties, and there is not seen a significant increase in people paying ahead of time and the caseload. So, there are concerns about it, and I don't know, here the chief behind me, I don't know if he wants to chime in, but...
Actually, I was going to ask him, Chief, could you share with us if you've had conversation with your counterparts and any specific concerns that you may have, or ideas that we need to be aware of?
With respect to, I apologize for the record, Steve Pitts, on behalf of the Reno Police Department, Alex and I were outside problem solving with Roberta on this other issue, but, and I wasn't up to speed where you were actually discussing specifically, Cadence, I apologize, Madam Mayor.
No, I understand, taking care of other business, thank you.
To clarify for the record, we're discussing Assembly Bill 248, which revises the provisions relating to criminal offenses involving vehicles. This is the bill that would make a number of currently criminal offenses civil. Yes.
We've talked about it, Madam Mayor, at chiefs and sheriffs, electronically, but not in a conversation face-to-face. Obviously, my concerns with it are, we have a program right now that we've talked individually with council members about, really to not increase revenue, but deal with the highest-risk violators in our community, and hold them more accountable, and of course, collect revenues associated with those fines. This would impact that significantly, especially if it was just an administrative fee, and I believe it was $250, Cadence, so.
Okay. So, Cadence, what kinds of modifications will you be asking for, and will they likely be received well?
Madam Mayor, what we've been discussing with them is that, does there need to be, before there's just sort of a unilateral imposition of this, does there need to be a review of the statutes that are currently specifically called out as criminal violations? What the penalties are associated with those, so that it's not just capturing everything all at once, that perhaps there are certain offenses, and perhaps those would be ones that would address Councilmember Breckus's concern for pedestrian and other roadway user safety, to have those enumerated in statute remain criminal penalties, as the chief said, the most serious violations. I think that, and it's an exhaustive undertaking to go through that, and so, as we've been reviewing it, we're finding that many of these violations are actually already called out in statute, specifically identified as misdemeanor, even felony in some cases, and that the maximum penalty is set forth. So, it's an analysis to look at, you know, what revenue are we receiving on the ones that would fall under this new 250 threshold, as opposed to the others that have a higher penalty that would remain in statute? So, we're working with them to try and make sure that that analysis could take place in an attempt to eliminate that significant fiscal impact.
So, seems reasonable that we do support the recommendation to support if amended, and you're on it.
I know it's not had a hearing yet, has the League of Cities come out in any type of position with regards to it?
Councilwoman Jordan, at this time, no. There was, as I indicated, a number of the cities do have submitted significant fiscal impacts, but also a number of them because of the reasons that I've talked about, as far as increased collection, those sorts of things are not necessarily opposed, and so there's not, there isn't a unanimous position amongst the cities, and typically, if there is not a somewhat unanimous position, then the League will not take a position and let the individual members come forth with their own.
So, direction is to support with amendment, correct?
My preference would be to monitor it, rather than jump in, since there's so much going on, and I really am bothered, you know, at first blush, by the fact that, you know, you're decriminalizing vehicular offenses. I think that, you know, our society needs to get point where misusing vehicles for bodily harm is a criminal offense, and I've watched this for so many years and seen lack of prosecution for vehicular misuse. Of course, a lot of times that's up to the DA, so I really do have a hard time with this without knowing a little bit more, seeing, and I think sometimes it's not bad for us as a city to sit back and see how the first hearing goes and how the bill gets amended anyway, I don't know that we make that much of a difference, you know, at first blush either.
Madam Vice Mayor, if I may, with all due respect to Councilwoman Breckus, on a bill that we've submitted a significant fiscal note on, more than a half a million dollars, for me not to have direction from this council concerns me. I do believe that when this bill, if and when this bill gets a hearing, we will be asked to place our position on the record, and given that the Committee, First House Committee passage deadline comes before your next meeting, I won't have an opportunity to bring this back to you and let you know how that hearing goes. If we, you know, it's sort of one of those things that if you fail to participate at the onset, you lose a little bit of credibility in the long term, and so, that would be my concern with not having you take a position at all, but obviously, that is a decision for this body to make.
Cadence, that's exactly what I was going to say, having been involved in at least two of the legislative actions on DUIs, having been a victim, that's exactly what we need to do. We need to have the support of the major municipalities behind this, and as taking just a monitor suggests we're not as interested, I'm fearful, I think we need to give her the ability to be able to respond as quickly as maybe necessary, knowing that our concerns are preserve safety on our streets, enhance and preserve safety on our streets, and keep track and protect our revenue sources. We have a motion to support with amendment? And a second, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries four to one. AB 408?
Thank you. Assembly Bill 408 is a bill that was brought forth by Assemblywoman Neal, it did receive a hearing this week in the Assembly Government Affairs Committee, and this revises provisions governing business impact statements that are prepared by state agencies and governing bodies of local governments. And there's a number of items that we've identified in the staff report that we have some concerns with. We were able to put those concerns on the record in the hearing, and the bill sponsor indicated that she was receptive to those concerns, and that there would be amendments forthcoming to address those. I would point out, as a point of pride for our staff, that the Reno Chamber did testify that they think that we have been doing a good job with our business impact statements. We were not called out as an example, so that always makes me a little nervous, they might jinx us there, but we did get some kudos for the job that we've been doing, and so with that, we do have a recommendation for support if amended, and I do believe that we'll be successful in getting the amendments on the bill that would address our concerns.
Discussion? Motion? We have a motion and a second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 438, AB 438.
AB 438 is an Assembly Committee on Legislative Operations and Elections Bill. As of the writing of the report, this has not been scheduled for a hearing, but it may be up early next week. This requires a cooling-off period before former public officers who served on certain public bodies, the Reno City Council would be one of those public bodies, may serve as paid lobbyists on matters under consideration by those public bodies. Because this is a bill that affects you as council members, we wanted to bring it to your attention, staff does not have a recommendation for you, but would seek your direction on the bill.
You know, I have a question about the nature of a lobbyist. We are a municipality that does not have any registration processes for individuals who lobby us. Would this put us into that situation? Because, you know, we're a local government who doesn't know, you know, doesn't define it, so...
Councilwoman, I don't believe that this bill sets a formal registration process for lobbyists that come before local government bodies. It does include a definition of lobbyists and what those activities would be. I think those are consistent with folks that you have seen come before you, attempting to advocate for or against the passage of certain legislation or ordinances, you making certain findings, but this bill does not require specifically any kind of formal registration process.
So, Cadence, the bill, do I understand this correctly? So, once you're out of office, then there would be a period where you could not lobby particularly, is this correct?
You are correct, Councilwoman Sheeby, and it's a two-year period, cooling-off period. That is an extension. Currently, there is a one-year cooling-off period, and that would extend that to two years, and so, in the example of the city council, you would be prohibited from representing anyone in a private capacity before this council after you are out of office, for a period of two years.
And Cadence, has there been any discussion for amendments that could include things like local municipalities have no taxing authority? You know, reasons why this may be appropriate for certain elected seats and not others? Have there been those kinds of discussions?
On this particular bill, Madam Vice Mayor, not as of yet. Council may remember that last week, or last meeting I brought before you, Senate Bill 228, which was a bill that was brought forth by the Ethics Commission, and it also had some provisions having to do with cooling off, and there were discussions there. I imagine that if this bill, in fact, receives a hearing and passes out of committee, this is an assembly bill, that was a senate bill, that those two bills will need to be reconciled against one another if they are conflicting. It may be that the sponsor of this bill is satisfied with the provisions that are in that bill, even though it only retains the one-year cooling-off period, that there have been a number of other clarifications to the Ethics Chapter of NRS, and so, because this bill hasn't received a hearing yet, and it is a committee bill, there's, you know, not an individual legislator that we've been able to speak with on the bill yet, and so, we will be watching the hearing to hear that discussion.
And, so, probably the same answer, but on the former bill, the one from last week, one of the questions I heard from a colleague at one of the other seats said, "It's inconsistent with the benefits that a local, a municipal officer receives if there's a salary increase that's proposed, you don't get it in your current seat, you have to be re-elected to get the benefit." Are they putting a similar kind of caution on this? You also would need to be re-elected before the restriction would be imposed," is I believe the way he described it.
For this particular provision, it's actually the fact that you're no longer elected is why it applies, and so, there's not exactly parity there, Councilwoman. In the other bill, SB 228, this body, the provisions that would require you to have the cooling-off period before this council remain intact, but it does specify that because of the nature of the council positions, the local government positions, you would not be prohibited from lobbying any other governing body. So, if you could represent clients before the county commission, before other governing bodies, it would just be specifically the public body that you had served on, which I believe is the same case here, it's just extending that period to two years.
Any other questions? Pardon?
I don't know, I think a year seems to be adequate. Do you have any, I mean, it's just...
Councilwoman, not being an elected official...
I don't know, I can't see why, I mean, a year just seems to be adequate versus two years, I don't know...
Frank, I'm not really, I don't really have, I don't care if it's one or two years, I'm just not sure that it's going to get any traction, and if we really needed to take a position at this point, anyway.
It raises concerns to me about, are we really able to comply with the existing regulations? I mean, we saw two former council members here last week, talking to us, and I have a feeling they were here in their capacity as private individuals, but we don't know. And so, we may have to follow the way that other local governments do, is where they have a registration for lobbyists for this exact reason.
This is paid lobbyists, though, isn't it?
Well, a lot of jurisdictions... Well, a lot of jurisdictions, you know, do have that paid lobbyist clarification on their comment.
I do agree with that. I do think it would be a good idea to have a registry.
Yeah.
Absolutely. But, that's not the bill.
Yeah, on this particular bill, I'm not, I think we stay neutral for now and see what happens.
So, a watch?
Councilwoman, a position of neutral?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make that motion.
Second? We have a motion and a second? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. AB 446.
AB 446 has to do with the provisions governing requests for the drafting of legislative measures. This is an Assembly Committee on Legislative Operations and Elections Bill. The bill would reduce the number of bill draft requests that the city has available to it from three to two. Staff does have some concerns about that. Being a Dillon's rural state and not looking like we're going to get much traction on any form of home rule this year, we are concerned about limiting the number of measures that this body can recommend to the legislature, and so we are recommending a position of oppose. I would specify that that opposition is specific to the number of bill drafts for us. The bill is broader than that and does speak to bill drafts for other agencies, legislators, and when we, if it is the position of the council to oppose, we would specify in our testimony that we're only speaking in opposition to the sections that apply to us.
And Cadence, what's the history? I think in my tenure, I recall we've been reduced already.
We have, Councilwoman, I believe, in the 2007 session, we were entitled to five bill draft requests. That was changed, that was lowered in the 2009 session, if I'm correct about my years here, to three. That was originally scheduled to sunset, and we were supposed to actually go back up to five this year in the last legislative session. They removed the sunset on that, and so we have been at three for a number of years. And typically speaking, we have been one of the local governments that has used all of ours. I know we did withdraw one of them this year, but staff's concern is that because we are limited to those powers that have been expressly granted to us, we would like to maintain as much opportunity to bring forth items that allow cities to best serve our community, and so we would oppose seeing those numbers reduced.
And because we have fewer local representatives at the legislature than we've had in prior years, we lost two in the redistricting, correct, or three? How would the League of Cities' number be impacted of, BDRs?
I believe that the League of Cities and the Association of Counties remain at their current, they each get five bill drafts. I don't believe, and I can check and confirm for you, but I don't believe that their numbers are being reduced, but just the specific cities. Cities are, the number that we get is based on a population threshold, and they are lowering the number for cities within our population threshold.
I would definitely support the oppose position. What's that? We have a motion and a second to oppose. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. AB 459.
AB 459 is a committee from the Legislative Committee on Education. Not normally would we bring you an education bill. However, this one has to do with oversight panels for school facilities, and two of our members, Councilwoman Brekis and Councilwoman Sheeby, have been appointed to serve on the Oversight Panel for School Facilities in Washoe County. This bill is proposing to eliminate that Oversight Panel, and so we are seeking council direction as to the position of the council, certainly the members on that board. I will indicate that I did speak with the representative, the lobbyist for the school district, and asked if they had significant concerns about this, and she shared with me that this is not a body that has been very active in recent years, and because there is not significant anticipation of a lot of schools being built in the very near future, that they were neutral on the bill. So I would just share that with you as you contemplate this and formulate your position.
You know, Cadence, if we could get some clarity on that, I happened to be at a meeting fairly recently, in fact, I think it was EDON, Mr. Manager, if you can recall with me, where the superintendent was looking for EDON's support for their taxation bill, which has somewhat changed from what they originally were seeking support for. But in that presentation indicated that in near future, not distant future, he saw that he was going to need to be building schools in both the North and the South Valleys. There seems to be a conflict here.
Yeah.
Do you recall that, Mr. Manager? In his presentation? Yeah.
And perhaps what I need to do, Madam Vice Mayor, is seek clarification on what our definition of near future and their definition of near future is.
That could be semantics.
I don't want to misrepresent that they don't anticipate doing that in what I would consider the near future, the next year or so. He may be looking, you know, in the life of the school district, the next 10 years may be near future for them, so I could certainly seek that clarification from them.
And is there some history that if we eliminate something, is it harder to bring it back at a point when it's needed? Should we be concerned about that?
Certainly, as these boards and commissions are being sunsetted, if there were costs associated with those, those dollars get redirected back to other purposes, perhaps those are higher and better uses of those dollars. But if there was a desire to bring them back, I would say, you know, certainly, nothing about the elimination of this statutory committee would prohibit the school district from engaging in dialogue with elected officials at the local level. It removes the mandate, and so, to the extent that those dollars could be used for a higher and better use, perhaps that is appropriate. And I can certainly express, if it is the desire of the council to the school district, that if you are neutral or even supportive of the elimination of this board, that it is not an indication that you do not wish to be involved in discussions with the school district as they move forward, making plans to construct new schools in our community.
Meta Mayor, may I ask a question? Is this, it also, my understanding of this panel was it is also about remodels and renovations, too?
It has to do with school facilities.
Yeah. And I guess my thinking is, you know, the school district has really made a push for a new funding source, and the superintendent came and talked to us, and it's controversial. I mean, it is controversial. I think a member of the, I saw a member of the County Commission speak against it. I, you know, obviously, we don't have a decision. I'm kind of going back and forth myself, but it gives them some autonomy, the school board, that they haven't had in the past, and I think this would remain a good check on that. So, I'm kind of bemuddled that the school district is asking for some new taxation authority and then wants to, you know, strict accountability. I think the County Commission on that funding actually thought that maybe, or there was discussion, that the County Commission should be the one to decide whether or not that tax should be, you know, levied, rather than the school board. So, you know, I thought having this at least was a good balance to that new authority they were being given. Have you, how is that bill going?
Councilwoman Brekis, if I may back up just a minute, I do need to clarify that this is a legislative committee, the Assembly Education Committee's bill. This is not a bill that was brought forth by the school district. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, because, again, when I engaged with their lobbyists, this was not something that she represented to me, that the school district was trying to go out and have these oversight panels eliminated. And so, I took her at her word.
Well, here's the information. When I got appointed to this panel, I called the school district and asked, you know, "What do I do? When do I meet?" And they said, "Well, we're trying to eliminate him." So, you know, that was the staffer, so, you know, I've known for three, four months, they were hoping to eliminate this. So, you know, it's not always someone's bill whose name is the introducing party. So, where is the situation on this other, the item that the superintendent came and talked to us?
Assembly Bill 46, is that the bill that you're talking about?
Yeah.
That would impose an additional ad valorem and sales tax in Washoe County? That bill was, did get a hearing, and it is awaiting a work session whereby it would receive a vote by the committee. I, you know, haven't, hasn't been one of the bills that's been on the top priority, my top priority list of monitoring this last week or so. I know that there has been concern about granting the ability to the Board of Trustees to levy that tax, and perhaps there may be a removal of the amendment that would have put that into place and put it back, that this would require a two-thirds vote in the legislature, and it would be enabling for the county, that it would be a requirement, it's not enabling as it's drafted currently, as it would be drafted currently if the amendment is withdrawn. It would require that the County Commission put into effect the levy. It's not an option for them. Perhaps that is, that is being discussed. You may be privy to information that I'm not in your position as an elected official.
What position did we take on that? Did we take a position on that bill?
We did not take a position on that bill.
What is your recommendation? Do you think to watch this, or what do you think?
Certainly, Councilwoman, if it's the desire of this council to remain neutral and allow the school district and others to be the entities that are voicing strong positions on the bill, it's really, I mean, you as elected officials serve on this board. As I said before, I don't think that removing the mandate would say that this body is going to necessarily be any less involved. And so, I would defer to your wisdom as elected officials on this matter.
So, is that something we can support? Is that how?
Well, I mean, I think that if they get this new taxation power, which we're uncertain if they will or not, that we should maintain this oversight of that. But, maybe even regardless, these committees should sit. I sat through a remodel of my daughter's school. It was a Title I school. It was a failing school. I was a mom who was hanging out at this school, and they came in and did a remodel, that I didn't think the process was fair, and I think they were not inclusive, and they did owe up to that. And so, I have had issues with their processes. And so, I think that, you know, for us, with our neighborhood perspectives, we provide service and infrastructure to these school facilities, that we should have a seat at the table in watching how they develop, where they develop and expand their schools. So, that's my thinking.
I agree. I think this somewhat, I think this had, is part of the interpretation that we got from the initial report from IBM Smarter Cities, that we committed to them, that we work as a region and we will continue to work as a region. And I think this collaborative effort as working with the school district certainly plays into that commitment.
And I think, I think you're right, Jane. The reason I asked you is because it, basically, it's been non-existent. And I think to have something like that would be a much better position to be in, especially since education is so important right now, and everyone's really paying attention. So, the more ayes we have, the better. But, that's why I asked, because right now, it's been non-existent.
All right. If I could just add, too, I think it's sometimes, it's as Mayor Madam suggested, that we all stay regionally intact with some of these. It may be dormant now, but doesn't mean that sometime it'll pick up. And I find it a lot harder to reignite a board or commission once, you know, a lot easier for it to close it up. So, maybe it lay dormant for a while, as you guys are doing now, but it's there now. It's already been set up, their framework has been there, so...
So, I mean, maybe we oppose it, but we also watch this other mechanism, because, particularly if it goes to the county, you know, there may be an opportunity in there for oversight, because I'm sure the county is going to have some oversight role if they're raising taxes for schools. So, it may, you know, be an opportunity to mesh the two, maybe? I don't know.
Certainly, Councilwoman, and because this is an assembly bill, and I think you've heard a little bit about the rules that the Assembly has adopted, if you do have any concerns with the legislation as it's drafted, as introduced, then a position of opposition may be appropriate. And I should say, you know, opposition to a bill is not necessarily a bad thing, and it's the process.
It generates more discussion and caution on their part, potentially.
And so, your comments today are well-received, and if it is, in fact, your position to oppose, I will share those comments, both with the representatives from the school district and with the committee members, if and when the bill receives a hearing.
Okay. We have a motion to oppose with a second? Second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. SB 439.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. This is a bill from the Senate Government Affairs Committee. It has to do with provisions relating to collective bargaining agreements of local government employers, particularly the provisions relating to when collective bargaining agreements may be suspended. NRS 288 includes provisions for emergency situations whereby those agreements may be suspended. This bill provides a definition for financial emergency using the existing statutory definitions that are in NRS 354, that would indicate circumstances where the Department of Taxation has had to come in, take over a local government, that in fact, during those times, that is designated a financial emergency, and that those agreements may thereby be suspended. At this point, the staff's recommendation would be to support it. We feel this is clarifying language, that in fact, that financial emergency meets the definition of emergency and adds additional clarity to that, so that if, heaven forbid, we find ourselves in that situation, there is no question as to whether or not that is allowed.
Okay. Any discussion?
I guess, you know, last week, I asked if you'd seen any bills related to municipal bankruptcies, and you said no. And, you know, I think this is related to municipal bankruptcy. And I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying, so a bill did appear about municipal bankruptcy, right?
And Councilwoman, I believe my answer at the time was that we had, we had had over 400 bills drop in a very short period of time and had not completely gotten through them. And so, yes, absolutely, I had heard about this bill, thought it was out there, and this is the one, when you asked about it, that I, that immediately came to mind.
Okay, so one has shown up, and I guess my question is, I had heard that this bill was going to show up, and I thought it was going to be the city of North Las Vegas, whose financial troubles have been well-documented, as were ours during a period of time. This did not come from the city of North Las Vegas.
This bill was brought forth by the Senate Government Affairs Committee. I do not believe that it was brought forth by the city of Las Vegas, or, excuse me, the city of North Las Vegas, who you may be aware is in litigation over action that they took with respect to their collective bargaining agreements. I have checked with them. They have no position on this bill because they are, in fact, in litigation. So, no, I do not believe that this comes from the city of North Las Vegas. My guess is that a member of that, there are members of that committee who represent North Las Vegas, and it may be their concerns that are resulting in this bill being brought forth.
And it did come forth from us or anyone from the North, did it? I mean, we really, have you, you really don't know who's...
Councilmember Brekis, it absolutely did not come from us. And I cannot, I am not aware that it came from anyone else in northern Nevada. My belief is that it is in direct response to the fact that the city of North Las Vegas did take action with respect to some of their collective bargaining agreements, under their current fiscal circumstances, but I don't believe that, I don't believe that the bill was brought forth by any local government.
Okay. I guess, you know, my point is, my thinking is, states all over the country are rethinking their bankruptcy laws, municipal bankruptcy laws. And I have an article that I kind of was passing around this fall, when I was thinking about this a lot. And California redid their bankruptcy laws, and last week, Stockton's been in the news, and it's a real big issue, because it gets into, you know, who's in the credit market? You know, are they in first line, or Calpers? And it's weeding out that, and it's just creating new, it's going down new paths in administrative, local government law. And I had thought that maybe at the state level, there'd be a broader analysis of our state framework for bankruptcy, or insolvency, as we call it, and it just seems like this is very pinpointed to one issue, not more comprehensively. And I'm just wondering if there is a problem out there, is it being addressed, you know, in the full scope that it needs to be addressed? And this is maybe, I guess, the only response we're seeing on this financial condition of municipalities, is, you know, collective bargaining agreements can be waived when you go up to Department of Taxation. That's all this... That's, that's all this would do, right?
Councilmember Breckus, you're correct. That is the scope of this bill. To date, I have not heard any discussion in committee hearings amongst other local governments from legislators about expanding the state of Nevada's provisions or changing them from, from what we have in statute currently, with the exception of this bill.
And the, the Department of Taxation, to take over the management of a city or a local government, that's only happened with the White Pine County situation. It hasn't happened in North Las Vegas. It didn't happen with us, correct? But we went on some sort of watch list, right?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, there is the Committee on Local Government Finance, which I sit on and which the Department of Taxation is, is staff to that committee. It's made up of representatives from the cities, the counties. I think there's appointments from the Board of Accountancy and the school districts as well on that committee. And so what, we did go on sort of their watch list and had to report to that committee on a regular basis what our situation was, but we were not, you know, we were not taken over by taxation. I think you're correct that White Pine County is the only one that I'm aware of. There may have been some previous to White Pine County, but I'm not, White Pine County is the only one that I'm aware of.
And who makes the decision to take it over? Is it solely rests with the governor?
I believe there are criteria that are laid out in the statute for the Department of Taxation on when they take over. And I think it's, I, I'm not sure if it's the Director of Taxation or if it's the governor. I'm not sure where the final decision lies. It may be the Tax Commission, for all I know. I'm not sure.
I think we saw a bill on that. Wasn't there a bill on that criteria of when your cash imbalance gets to a certain amount or?
No, Councilmember Breckus, I'm not aware of any bill on that. Again, the statutes are NRS 354, 685, and 686 that enumerate those conditions and the process whereby that would happen. And I believe Mr. Klinger's correct that White Pine County is the only one that I'm aware of, certainly anytime in the recent past. And I know that is certainly something that the Department of Taxation and others look to avoid, if at all possible, that it is sort of a measure of last resort, if you will.
But if we had municipal bankruptcy, you know, if the state decided they were going to look to some of these new models that were popping up under a bankruptcy proceeding, it's the local government who says, we're gonna, we're gonna file, right? Like anyone else. So we've got a model of, you know, an executive branch can make a decision, they can pull the collective bargaining groups versus what's going on in California where the city council retains their authority, goes into the courts, and a judge has the authority to, you know, say, this, this is how it's going to play out among all the parties, or so we think as we're watching California. And I'm just wondering if Nevada is really, has the most equitable framework in place and if support of this bill endorses a framework that maybe isn't the most equitable framework out there. That's my thinking.
Certainly, that's a, you know, that's a policy discussion for this council. I, I guess I would ask the favor of you to, to not ask me to go down there and say, we should do what they do in California, because that's never received very well down there. But, you know, if, if, if the policy decision of this body is that support for this measure is support for a system that you do not believe is effective, then certainly that was just a recommendation from staff and we seek your direction.
And I would provide input here, having lived through the three years that we were just very anxiously, nervously dealing with the budget and the restrictions of the limitations from our contracts and serious discussions that we had. I mean, we were ever so close as to being in an inability to, to pay. And I believe that this is not a threat to us, but actually is, is being offered as, as an opportunity to allow us a much more efficient, responsible reaction if that ever comes to us again. And it certainly could.
I, I go back to just a philosophical belief that the management, particularly in times of crisis, needs to be swift and, and with as little barriers as possible. So I, I'm in support of, I don't think we stay neutral on this. I think, I think we support it.
But I mean, I'm, oh, do you have something else? I mean, think about it, under this mechanism, it's the collective bargaining agreements that get, have the spotlight attention. And, and I know that, you know, we have a process of negotiations on those. But when you go through a true municipal bankruptcy, every, as we're watching in Stockton, everyone's in line. The credit, the capital market creditors, which are the Goldman Sachs, who we talked about today, the Bank of New York, they're on the same playing level, level playing field as our employees and their families. When you go this route, it comes out to our employees and our families. And so on our, on a sort out of the local government obligations. So I tend to be favoring a new approach of looking at this situation statewide. And maybe this bill is not about that. I don't know.
Councilwoman Breckus, if I may, and certainly if Mr. Klinger or Mr. Chisel want to add in, I am, I'm not an expert in municipal finance, but I, but I believe that there are other provisions when we declare a financial emergency and under NRS 354, 685, and 686. I, and correct me if I'm wrong, and certainly we can get you those statutes. I don't think it's just collective bargaining agreements. I believe that there's provisions having to do with the statutory caps on our tax rate and a number of other issues that triggers, if you will, that are put into place. And so while certainly this relates to the larger picture of what happens when a municipality declares a financial emergency, it is not the only provision.
And that's what I go back to, that an emergency is not just someone saying, we have an emergency, there's absolute criteria for it. I, I am in support of this. I'd like to make a motion of support for this bill.
A motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I'll support it, you know, tentatively for now because I do think this is an area that needs attention. I just, I would like more information. I'd like to know where, you know, someone would forecast the capital market creditors would fall in line before the bargaining groups if the, if something like this was to play out.
Certainly, councilwoman, staff can work on that information and provide it to the council.
Yeah, in line with Jenny. Yeah.
Okay. So it is unanimous that we support 439.
Great. Thank you for that direction.
Thank you. Moving on to AB 351.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. If I may, we have a trio of bills here that have to do with the use or provision of marijuana. These bills are before you by request today. There are three of them, AB 351, AB 402, and SB 374, all having to do with varying degrees of allowing the use of marijuana. One of them goes the full route to allow for recreational use. The others are more limited, having to do with medical use and then the provisions that would thereby be adopted to provide for the dispensing of, of medical marijuana by, by providers, be they for-profit or nonprofit dispensaries. We receive, we included a great deal of information in your staff report. And so on each of these, again, thinking that this, first and foremost, we need the policy direction from this council as to your feelings about the use of marijuana. We did include in the report some of the concerns that have been expressed by the Reno Police Department as they have been monitoring other states where similar laws have been passed, some of the challenges in implementing these in those communities. And then certainly the overriding conditions that there are still federal regulations that would be in conflict, even if the state were to take action to pass one or more of these measures.
Can we take all these at, at one time?
Certainly, if it's your desire, you could, you can give me.
Yes, we may. Take a position of opposition.
Motion to oppose?
These are, wrong. I don't know, I'm not so sure. I mean, only because that I think it's coming and, I mean, honestly, a lot of the research that I've done, it's coming. And I think it's, we're gonna have to really look at it and all the different provisions and how we fall into this as a city and the stipulations and so forth. So I just kind of feel like getting there is, you know, I don't know. That's, this could.
There's some real concerns with some of the language in this, though. I mean, it's, to me, it almost puts it in the same line of exempting from state prosecution if somebody is under the influence of marijuana and gets in a vehicle and kills somebody, that you're, you're exempting them from that, from that prosecution. That is not acceptable.
Is that in there?
Yes, it's a huge safety issue.
I don't have it in front of me, so I don't know.
And the second one has to do with, if you're not agreeable to the first one, you're not gonna probably be agreeable to the second one, but it has to do with qualifying marijuana usage in a workplace environment under an ADA type issue, which means an employer has to put into place a reasonable accommodation. And for anybody who has worked in the private sector, who has dealt with reasonable accommodations, I don't even know how that would work on a marijuana usage. I guess, what would an accommodation even look like? It's, it's a, there's language in here that concerns me greatly, so.
And Cadence, I didn't hear you say that there would be any kind, the enforcement issues that, that our chief has identified of concern to him, there's nothing in here that suggests that the state would share in that responsibility or providing revenue to do so.
Madam Vice Mayor, I don't believe so. I mean, certainly to the extent where we don't have jurisdiction and the state is the only entity that has jurisdiction, they, they would have that responsibility. That, you know, the distributions of the proceeds, were it to be taxed, we may receive a portion thereof. You know, my, my guess is that the lion's share will go to the state general fund.
Exactly.
I, I would join in opposition to the first two, but SB 374, I think, is coming. I do believe, and, and as a land use planner, the land use legal community has been saying to cities, medical marijuana is coming to your neighborhoods and business districts, whether by a vote of the people or the legislature. And we had the vote of the people and now the legislature's coming in. And I, I think, you know, I don't know what's going on down there, but I think that this is an attempt to implement what the voters voted on over a decade ago. And so, and I do have concerns, you know, about use. As the mother of someone about to be a teenager, I am concerned about the product. But I also feel that it is widely accepted as a medical therapy. So I have, I balance on it. I don't really think it's important. What I think, I think as a city, we need to be really ready to get our zoning ordinances in place. And I think that has played out in some cities and we do not want to be the ones asleep at the wheel because it could have consequences. And I do see opportunity with the taxation. I, I read this bill, 374. I think it is well-written to allow us to then do our zoning, zoning map amendments and get a state-of-the-art code to, to, you know, monitor and craft these where they need to go and also on the other side to put in some taxation. So, you know, let's, I would not be inclined to support or oppose. I'd just like to stay very neutral and very eyes-on to how the implementation will go with the local governments.
I did have a very brief discussion with the mayor before the meeting started today by phone. And he asked that there, you know, the couple of the items that he had some interest in. So I think Andrew just stepped out to see if he could get him by phone to let him express whatever his thoughts are. Should we take a moment of recess for you guys to get him by phone?
Madam Vice Mayor, perhaps we could table this discussion and maybe let me give you an update on a couple other of the bills.
There you go.
While you try and get him on the line. As, as we always do, I'll provide an update on the city of Reno's bills. Our Charter Committee Bill is still awaiting a work session, anticipating that there will be work sessions in Assembly Government Affairs coming late this week and then the majority of next week. They're really trying to get through the bills that they haven't heard yet before they move on to actual work sessions. So as you heard me say, a five-hour committee hearing this morning for them. So anticipating that perhaps late this week or early next week, that bill will come before that committee for a vote. Senate Bill 4, as I reported last time, is awaiting a vote on the Senate floor. Again, because of the push for getting things out of committee, we're not anticipating seeing a lot of things come to the floor, particularly those that needed amendments, as our bill did. So it may be another week or so before we see any action on the Senate floor. As we've been visiting with the members of the Senate, we have been well-received and anticipate that that bill will pass out of the Senate without issue. Additionally, I would provide an update on Senate Bill 457, which is a bill we brought you at your last council meeting. That has to do with the ward-only voting issue. That bill was heard yesterday, was that yesterday? Yesterday morning in Senate Legislative Operations and Elections, I did testify as to the council, the majority council position of opposition to that bill. Councilmember Dorch also was in attendance and spoke in opposition to the bill. Had a very respectful exchange with the committee members. And I have been asked by the Chair of that committee, Senator Spearman, to meet with her on Monday morning about the bill. And so I am, will await the, the conversation from her. She did want to meet with me prior to a work session on that bill, so perhaps an amendment may be forthcoming. Unfortunately, because of very busy schedules this week, Monday morning was the first opportunity where our calendars aligned. And so we'll, we'll have an update for the council on that, following that meeting and at your next council. At this time, I think that is the bulk of the bills that I have any kind of significant update for you on. And so with that, I don't know if we've been successful in reaching the mayor. I think we may be moments away. And so if there are any other bills or items that the council members have questions on, I'd be pleased to try to answer those at this time.
Any other questions?
You know, I do have a question. I guess one question is, how are things going with our lobbyist who we've hired?
Yes. The capital company, and in my opinion, has been doing a very good job for us when we have needed assistance with, meeting with members of our delegation, with, with the other, all 63, speaking to them about bills that we have coming forward on a hearing. They have been very responsive. Their, their access to legislators is great. We receive good information from them about what's being discussed by both the majority and the minority leadership, sort of what, what issues are, are at hand. They're, they're helpful in pointing out pitfalls on some things that, that we may not have the background on. So my professional opinion is that they are doing a very good job for us.
I guess a question as a matter of process is, does the council or the city, after a legislative session, do we evaluate, you know, how we did and, you know, and the return on our investment? Is it something, we've had that kind of retrospective look and thought of, you know, how it went? Have we done that in the past?
Councilwoman, the process that we generally undertake after the session is over is that staff will come back, we will prepare a final report from the session, let you know the outcome of the bills that the, that the council took a position on. One of our performance measures for this program is, is how we do on bills that we took, you know, how, if we supported it, did it make it out? If we opposed it, you know, did it come out? So we do conduct that analysis. As far as return on the investment with our contract lobbyists, you may recall the conversation that we had when we executed the contract with this particular lobbyist. And in the past, And in the past, we have had what I would call relatively short-term arrangements with our contract lobbyists. And so, generally speaking, by the time we get that final report, we are at the close of the term of the contract. In this particular case, we, we are going to retain their services through the 2015 session. So, we may take a little bit different approach. I am certain that Mr. Griffin will be present either when we give our final report or if he's still catching up on his sleep then, that he can come back at a later time this summer. And, and I'm certain that, that he would be pleased to answer questions and report back to this council as to his activities during the session and, and his evaluation of how we performed. Perhaps he can give you some feedback on how staff did.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. We are at the agenda items that we talked about briefly earlier today. There are the three marijuana-related bills at the legislature that we've been having discussion on. And Cadence, do you want to do just that brief review again of the synopsis of each of the three?
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor, I'd be happy to do so. As you indicated, we have three bills before us that have to do with the use of marijuana, AB 351, which is provisions governing the medical use of marijuana. Assembly Bill 402 that provides for the legalization and taxation of marijuana, which that bill would include for recreational use, not just medical use. And then Senate Bill 374, which provides for the registration of nonprofit dispensaries to dispense medical marijuana for persons who are authorized to engage in the medical use. So, three related bills, not all the same. I believe that I heard a motion to oppose all three and then perhaps some discussion of opposition on the first two and perhaps that a more in-depth dialogue needed to take place amongst you as the policymakers on Senate Bill 374.
So, we've had some discussion here already, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, we couldn't get you sooner. Are you, are you in favor or opposition?
I'm in opposition, I'm in opposition right now of all three of them.
Thank you, sir. In fact, I believe we had a motion by Ms. Jarden and didn't hear a second. Is there a second for opposition?
I'll make a second.
Okay, now, we're correct to have discussion.
Mayor, I'd really like to stay neutral. This is Jenny Breckus on 374. The discussion that I had was, you know, in my professional field, land use planning, legal, there's been a lot of advice to cities that, hey, medical marijuana is coming your way. Be ready, be prepared, whether it's a vote of the people, which we had about 10 years ago, or through your legislature, which they seem to be doing now. And, you know, maybe it's not so important right now at the state, but if this does go through, we need to be very on the ball and get the zoning ordinances in place so these don't pop up like they did. I think Oakland was the place that they just started popping up and had a big problem on them. And, and we also need to, from a business life...
You're still talking?
Yeah, well, that's my point is...
I don't, I don't see why it hurts us to oppose those three bills at this point.
Mr. Mayor, one of the comments that Cadence made when she first presented it to us is that there would be some conflicts with federal regulations as well.
Well, I think that somebody's trying to get the cart way out in front of the horse. I personally don't support any of them at this time.
And part of my opposition, too, is that, is this is proving to be very difficult for local police entities to regulate. And I feel like our resources are stretched to their very end as it is to have this layered on top and that there's no, I, I have concerns philosophically on it, but from a practical standpoint, I'm not sure that it's something that even if we supported, we would be able to enforce.
Well, and if it's against federal law and stuff like this at this point, I don't see how we could enforce any of it.
Well, and I take your points, and I, I agree. And I, I suppose I can go with the motion if that's the majority view of others, because, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we don't even know what the zoning is on properties we've been annexing. We have real problems in our zoning code. And I think the, I think the fix can be easy with these. I think there can be some opportunity. But we have a zoning code, which, this'll drive some, some text amendments, but we need to be ready. I mean, because I think, when I look at who's in on this bill, I see, I see bipartisan support. And so, I think it's gonna go, but I'll...
I, I just, and I don't disagree with it at this point, I think it will, but I, I just don't think at this point, they've given us enough to work with.
Scottson?
I think it's, you know, Mayor, I think it's the state, I think there's enough examples that they're looking at over in Arizona and California that they're giving us the best there is out there. Now, the federal law issue is an issue. I agree.
Well, in California, I just read where they busted some guy, and he was a, he was an elected official for running a, selling marijuana and stuff, running it to the other business.
From a dispensary? Okay.
I, I think we should oppose it at this point.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to oppose all three of the bills. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Cadence, are there any, anything else?
Madam Vice Mayor, that concludes my lengthy report for today. Sorry to have kept you here so long, but very much appreciate your thoughtful deliberation and the direction that you've given us. We'll, we'll have an update for you at your next council meeting.
Yes, you will. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate your involvement. Oh, we already lost him. Thank you. We'll move on to Item L2, Liaison Reports. Does anyone have any? Seeing none? No? We'll go on to conferences and professional meetings? None? Okay. L4.
Resolution number 7836, resolution, resolution donating $500 from council donation funds to the Evelyn Mount Outreach of Reno Sparks to provide food and basic necessities to needy individuals and families during the Easter holiday.
Second. And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. L5.
Resolution number 7837, resolution donating $500 from council donation funds to the Greater Harvest Church to provide activities and resources at local schools for at-risk youth.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We should've kept him on the phone for this one. Discussion impossible, direction to staff to turn our casual Fridays into Wolf Pack Fridays.
He, he requested that be continued to the next meeting.
Did he? Okey-dokey. Then we will continue that to the meeting, our next meeting, April 17. Again, we do not have any public hearings tonight at 6 o'clock. Public comment? Seeing none. Entertain a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone.